So, microphones?
They're here.
That's it? Do you want us to approach the...
No, no.
Do you want that microphone?
You can just stand and bend over the entire time. You're sneaking into it.
Or hold it up.
I thought Jose would be here. I owe him a chat, but he's not here.
All right, at 6:30, I'm going to open the November 30th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business tonight is to have a tax rate classification hearing that is conducted with our Board of Assessors and our principal assessor. So I will turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. The tax classification hearing for the listening audiences, that statutory event that takes place once a year to address one simple question. Does the town of Lakeville adopt a single tax rate or alternatively dual tax rates, essentially a higher tax rate on commercial and industrial properties that would translate into a lower tax rate for residential properties? So that's the point of the hearing tonight. I will follow the document that I've prepared for you just by way of update. Normally, when we come into this hearing, we will have had our new growth certified. All the paperwork is in the Fall River office awaiting certification. We'll probably have that in hand tomorrow. Unfortunately, we're a day off, so this session will need to be reconvened next week to finish the vote or take the vote on your classifications.
Right, but you don't anticipate the numbers changing?
No.
Right, okay.
I think what you see in this document represents what will end up being approved in the way of a proposed tax rate, assuming you adopt a single tax rate at the end of this process. This is an important year for Lakeville. This is our tri-annual certification year. Department of Revenue certification represents, in effect, an audit of our assessments, assessment practices, everything that goes into the formulation of values. Also looks at the quality of the data that we gather and maintain throughout the year. And we have passed muster with the Department of Revenue. We have, in effect, been certified. Our values have been certified. It's important to know, looking at the numbers, that average assessments, both in the residential and commercial class, are going up somewhere between 3% and 5%. That reflecting and appreciating market and rising property values. There are caveats, obviously, if you've added an addition or if you're in some subclass of property that we've determined is relatively undervalued, you might see a slightly higher increase than the one. We talk in terms of averages. Averages represent highs and lows and everything in between. People need to recognize that fact. So you'll see on the second page here, the development of our property tax levy. We had and have, we have about $318,000 in new property tax revenue coming to the town on new construction. That new construction, of course, includes new homes, new condominiums, new convenience stores, and what people see when they drive around town in the way of new construction. We are permitted to raise under Proposition 2.5, $22,463,000. We'll be raising close to that amount, essentially leaving excess levy capacity of around $7,000. That $7,000 is there only by virtue of the fact that if we raise the tax rate, the proposed tax rate, by one penny, we would exceed the maximum allowable levy. You'll see here at the bottom of this page, a breakdown of the property classes, the major classes. And in Lakeville, residential properties represent about 86.4% of the taxable base, about the corresponding roughly 13.5% of our tax bases in commercial properties. That tells us that if we were to adopt a split rate, we would have to raise commercial and industrial tax rates significantly to yield a very modest reduction in residential values, taxes. For that reason, the Board of Assessors has voted at their last meeting to recommend that the selectmen adopt, as they haven't passed, a single tax rate to be applied across all classes of property. If you choose to adopt a uniform or single tax rate, I am projecting that tax rate to come in at $13.64 per thousand. That's a little bit lower than last year's $13.86. Of course, we need to remember valuations are going up, so lower tax rate against higher valuations. And the average residential property owner will see an increase in their fiscal year 2018 taxes. I am estimating that increase to be about $127 on average, reflecting about a 2.8% That pretty much summarizes this document and my comments. I do offer on the last page, a proposed motion. That motion should be made at the meeting on the continued hearing on the 6th. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. Do you have any questions, John?
For all, I really appreciate this document. I know the first time you did this, I was really impressed with how you lay out all the information. It's a very, very well-done document in terms of understanding the process and understanding the numbers. So I appreciate that thoroughness again this year. I don't have any questions, but I appreciate your...
Thank you.
I do have one small question. So last year, I think it was at the annual town meeting, was that when we voted to exclude the property tax, the personal property tax on the very small amount?
Yes.
And so I know that that wasn't a very large amount, but that would be reflected through this calculation where the shift kind of hits the residential?
I can't give you...
It's probably like two bucks. It wasn't much?
It was less than that.
It was less than that.
It was 1.2%.
Yeah. I just wanted to make it, but that...
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, right.
So that, yeah, so the valuation of the personal property doesn't include that then this year? Like, it's just excluded from the total valuation?
Any action the assessors take to reduce the taxable valuation ends up getting translated into a slight increase in the tax rate.
Okay.
That increase might be less than a penny based on that.
Your question, Mitzi, is, I think you're asking, when you look at personal property and you look at that sharp evaluation, this number doesn't include...
Right.
What used to be.
Right. It's net of those accounts.
They don't exist. Okay.
Right. I don't have any questions on your proposal. I think it's, as Aaron indicated, it's well done. There's been many articles written, I'll just take a minute, many articles written on various tax rates by town. You can do them by Bristol County, Plymouth County, but there was one done by the Brockton Enterprise. Not that that's a bible, but there were 25 towns that they service. In virtually, we had the lowest tax rate of those 25 towns. And as far as the average tax bill, we were fourth from the lowest average tax bill also. And the other two of the three that were below us were within $50 of the average tax bill, which I think our average tax bill is $4,500, something like that. So it still maintains a low tax, which is a good thing. I wish we had more business area to attract more businesses, because we have a good tax rate.
So I guess, just to that point, so we better... 2.5% this year was 5.23, 6.35. So that's our levy limit increase under Prop. 2.5 that we were able to bring in for revenue on top of what we will get tomorrow as our certified new growth of 318,063. So it's a total of guaranteed revenue that the town brought in last year of $941,698. If we look at that and we add approximately 2.5% to those two numbers, so we can see what our additional revenue would be next year, we're roughly at about $965,000. Sorry, our guarantee is going to be $21,000 plus the 5.23. So we'll be somewhere around $545,000-ish, I think, on the 2.5 levy limit increase as we go into the budget season. That's what I'm just trying to get to, is that when we do our levy... What's that? No, no, it's a... Is it?
It's 841,691.
Oh, 841. Wow. Clearly I didn't get to English my dinner.
I was going to wait.
So eight and a quarter.
841,698.
But the 21 is where it is anyway. So I did the math right on the other side?
I did that.
So roughly, what we'll end up bringing in with the 2.5% levy limit, going to that, is revenue of about $545,000 as we move into the budget season, roughly. And then whatever the new growth is going to be next year. So it's just one of those things I just want to, you know, keep in mind that that's all we have for guaranteed funds coming in through the taxing system.
Right, and the new growth was what I call fairly substantial at 318, because we had such things as more duplexes at the LeBaron Estates, one very significant executive home, the Seasons gas station. So there was some significant growth. This year seems a little bit of a lull, and next year may have more houses being built. But the 318 is probably, you never kind of project, but probably the peak of the growth at this point in time.
So hard to forecast what the building season will bring next spring. I always caution, building a budget around conservative numbers and then allowing for some flex if we get a great project.
Right, right. I think that's what Mitzi was having.
Yeah, it's just trying to see what we know we're going to be bringing in for revenue as we move into the budget season, which is the 5.45 plus whatever the new growth comes in at, which maybe it's 2.55 for ease of math.
Yep.
Which gets to be $800,000.
Don't count on the 3.
Yeah, exactly.
Sir, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. 225 Bethard Street.
Identify. Excellent, thank you.
I had a question on Staple Shore. I kind of looked at you evaluating those houses from business to residential. Now, do they get a break or are they paying the same rate?
No, the tax rate is consistent among all the zoning classifications, so if you're in a residential or a commercial, it's the same one tax rate.
One tax rate.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions relative to agenda item number one? I thank you for both coming in. We'll conclude this at our next meeting when we have the final numbers.
I would, I would vote to continue the tax rate classification hearing to our meeting next week on Wednesday.
I'll second that.
I don't know what the date is. December 6.
December 6.
It's not working.
Did they watch a little?
It's not yet, I know. I need to be prior to...
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number two is to meet with Derek Maxey to discuss his plans for the former Lakeville hospital property. I assume that's why most of you are here. Derek is here. Derek, do you want to wait until 7:00 or...
I'm ready whenever you ask.
Okay. Why is this?
It's supposed to be...
Oh, I see, okay. So Derek, we posted this for 7:00, so we're going to wait until then to start, just in case other people want to show up. But we're just, we're going to just continue with other agenda items to get through the, get through our agenda. Maybe we could skip down to 8:00. Wait, let's do, yeah, let's do 8:00. So this is a request from the town clerk to the Board of Selectmen to approve the warrant for the town election. This is our annual town election on April 2nd, 2018. Our Lakeville town election will be held on Monday, April 2nd, 2018, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the following location. Precincts 1, 2, and 3 at Ted Williams Camp, Loon Pond Lodge, 28 Precinct Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Registered voters of the town will elect the following positions into office. One-year term, one moderator. Five-year term, one planning board member. Three-year term, one selectman, one Board of Assessors member, one Board of Health member, one cemetery commissioner, two finance committee members, one park commissioner, and one library trustee. Oh, I see, yep. The Board also moves to include on the annual town election ballot, the Office of Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Committee member as follows. Lakeville, two three-year term, one one-year unexpired term. Freetown, one three-year term. Have any questions relative to this?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the warrant as drafted.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number nine. A request for the renewal of a storage trailer permit at 19 Stetson Street. Philip Sherman. Philip Sherman has requested the renewal of his temporary storage trailer at 19 Stetson Street. If approved, this permit would expire on December 3, 2018. Receive the copy of Mr. Sherman's application. Do we normally get any other information on this?
No, no. This is a storage, not a storage...
Oh, right, that's right. Do you, anybody have any questions?
Nope, he's done it every year.
What is it?
Temporary. One of the few, one of the very few.
Okay. Well, I move that we grant the permit as requested.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries, it's unanimous. All right. Agenda item number 10. Do we want to extend closing times for package stores, liquor licenses on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve? The ABCC allows local licensing authority to extend Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve package store closing hours until 11:30. In the past, we kept it at 11:00. What do we want to do this year?
Keep it at 11:00?
We haven't received a request to have it be longer, right?
No.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Everyone seems to be going at 9:00.
Right. All right. So do we take no action on this if we're not extending it?
Mr. Chair, if you could have a vote, because I need to notify the liquor licensees.
You need it for the ABCC. Right, okay. Yeah, I remember that now. I move that we do not extend the time from 11:00 to 11:30.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number 12. Restaurants with liquor licenses on New Year's Eve. Unlike the package stores, we have traditionally extended the hours until 11:30 a.m. with all patrons out at 2:00 a.m. As a local licensing authority, we're allowed to extend the last call hours on New Year's Eve. We've done it in the past, if we want to do it again.
Yes.
Okay, I agree.
Everyone's gone by 11:00, but we'll still extend it.
No, this is New Year's Eve.
I know, I know. Well, 11:00, well, maybe 11:15, New Year's Eve.
All right. Do you have any questions here? All right. I move that we extend the closing times as requested on New Year's Eve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, it's unanimous. Let's see that as-built plan proceed upon preserve. Agenda item number five is to vote and sign the as-built plans proceed upon preserve. So this was a town, or I should say, a number of town roads that were accepted at a town meeting, and we need to sign them so that they can be recorded. We need to vote first and then sign them.
I just hit the pen.
Do you have any questions on this one?
No, no.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the plans as drafted and sign them.
So moved.
Signing them.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just like, put this in, leave it, not stage, only put each row. All right. That's weird.
Yeah, you got to sign more than that one.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that's the one that matters, is the mileage. We don't care about the copies.
Wow. The planning board needs to eat one a new time.
Oh, I see.
And the town clerk.
Everybody's got to keep a copy so that it's, so we're burying paper.
It's going to be easier. The most exciting part is the levies.
Barely standing.
Giant plan. It should be three of those.
No, no, I'll go back in seconds. I just, I don't, you are sure to be more efficient. Yeah. Yeah.
She's going to check.
You got it.
Thank you. Extension of the assessors.
The what?
Extension of the assessors.
I've got the solar canopy's in the transportation office.
Yeah, then we'll take longer than five minutes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, no.
Yes, yeah, we can do that one. All right. Agenda item number four is to review and vote on the extension of the purchase and sales agreement for 239 Main Street Assessor's Office. We have a copy of an extension for review. The original is in the signed folder. So the town is selling the assessors' building, and we have a contract with a purchaser. The purchaser has requested an extension for the time of performance from December 6th to December 29th. Any questions relative to that? Do you have any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of time of performance from December 6th to December 29th, 2017.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, do you want to do the appointments to the superintendent of the street committee? That's quick.
Oh, yeah, where is that one?
That's under old business.
Oh, I see. Yep, okay. Yeah, that's, you can do that. I move that we appoint the following people to the Superintendent of Street Search Committee: Nathan Darling, Frank Avalara, Daniel Hopkins, Ryan Trahan, Roger Hamilton, Aaron Burke, with an expiration date of, when do they normally expire?
July 31st, 2018.
July 31st, 2018. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, it's unanimous. Yeah, everything else will take a while.
Do we have any updates from anything? Customers donations for Winterfest, sponsors, exciting. Yeah, we have another $2,000 sponsor, another $1,000 sponsor, very new, plus a, or is it a $2,000 sponsor? Another $2.50 that came in.
That list is so much.
I don't know what to call it.
Did, uh, I didn't call them tomorrow, it's three thousand.
Forget much progress.
So they check in?
Yes, she did, Tracy typed it.
Awesome. Maybe I just won't call them back, yeah. The three thousand dollar sponsor for Winterf- Winterfice. Pro group contract.
Fifty seconds incoming. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that might be awesome. So, folks, we're gonna set up a microphone just so that we can have everybody project better, so that everybody in the back can hear. That might just take a few minutes, it's seven o'clock, so, um, agenda item number two is to meet with Derek Maxey to discuss his plans for the former Lakeville Hospital property. Um, we'll just take a few minutes to get that set up, and then Derek, you can, uh, we'll, we'll signal for you to come on down.
How you doing?
It is. Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Is it working back there? No, is it?
I can't have to keep it.
I was gonna say, I think we need the eldest guy that comes in here.
Is it, hello, is it working back there now? Jesus. Well, I can yell, if that'll work.
Thank you.
So, we, uh, we got a call from Derek Maxey, who, and he, he has set up, uh, an LLC that purchased the, the property at the Lakeville Hospital site. He wanted to come in and have a conversation with the Board of Selectmen about what his plans may be for that. I invited him to, well, I accepted that, of course, and added to the agenda. And we've since let folks know that for the sake of, uh, you know, hopefully getting some, uh, concerns or questions answered tonight to a certain degree. What this isn't is, um, kind of an open forum, if you will. So what I really want to see happen is Derek do his presentation to us. We kind of field some questions to him. We'll open it up to all of you for the sake of questions relative to what he's presenting. But I want to try to keep it within the scope of that, because I think that that's, um, kind of what he's presenting to us tonight. So, when we do have the question, um, section, I'd, I'd like you to identify yourself and, um, direct all questions through the chair, which is me. And we'll, um, we'll do our best to, uh, to hopefully get some direction on, on what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I brought some, what they call, well, first of all, my name's Derek Maxey. Uh, I live in Lakeville, like all of us here. And why I bought the property, I'm still not sure. But I get tired of driving by it and seeing nothing was happening to it. Uh, so I inquired about it, and next thing you know, we were, we made, came up with an agreement that, we purchased the property, my wife and I, Madeline, and, you know, hopefully, tonight and from now on, we can come up with some progresses of what the town might want there. But what I did bring for the Board of Selectmen, I have a few, I wasn't expecting this many. Probably was expecting, I'm not sure. But Lakeville, in two thousand and ten, did a Lakeville Hospital Growth District Development Plan. So I'm gonna pass some to the board members and staff up here. And Madeline has a few, as she can, maybe you guys can just share a few of them down there.
Thanks.
And I'm, if, if, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll stand more over here so that...
Sure, yeah.
Well, maybe the camera's not right here, but... So, if I'm not speaking loud enough, just raise your hand back there, and, and I'll try to speak a little louder. I am a little uncomfortable. I was thinking of postponing this meeting, but I guess I probably would've got tired and feathered today if I did do that. But thank you all for coming. I really do appreciate you all coming. So again, uh, I wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen and the residents, as I've noticed some town officials and committee members and stuff here, for allowing me to come here tonight to speak. And I wanted to mention that my wife and I are both business owners in Lakeville. Kids went to school in Lakeville, now in college. We, two thousand and eleven, my wife and I bought the Lakeville Country Club, which was, uh, was kind of getting to be defaulted as a business. Uh, I'm not a golfer, but I saw potential there. Uh, today, we have over thirty employees that work for us there, and, you know, we've been feeling successful, and we enjoy what we're doing there. So, I wanted to kind of get that out there. And the main thing here is, we, we really want, and we want to do what we all think fits in this area. It's a very delicate area, I know it's, uh, it's the first thing you see when you come into Lakeville. We don't want it to be an eyesore for everybody coming in. Don't really have a, any real definitive plan, and that's kind of one of the reasons I wanted to come here tonight, to, to kind of see what other folks think might fit in that area. The, uh, so I'm really, you know, we're here to try to get some ideas, my wife's gonna take notes on, you know, when people, you know, give us some ideas, what you think should happen there. The, uh, excuse me, we, the only thing we have planned to date right now is to do, uh, some, uh, five or six houses on Route seventy-nine. Uh, there's a lot of expenses to clean up this property, as everyone's aware of. Big today, it's, uh, the last estimate's about a six point nine million dollar cleanup for the buildings that are there, and the environmental, all the environmental concerns are there. And I do want to formally thank Stop and Shop for actually letting this happen. They could've continued trying to sell it to whoever. I sat down with them, and I told them that, you know, we wanted to try to do something that the town and all of us could be proud of. So we're coming up with that, and there's a lot of talk about what I paid for it, yes, I didn't pay a lot as far as the purchase price goes, but there are other issues that we did have to pay for as we're doing this. And again, there's still the six point nine million dollar cleanup, that we're very aware of how that has to be done. Uh, I personally used to work for a dental company, so I understand the demolition process. I've worked with, uh, I've worked with a gentleman, I believe his name's Mr. Higgins, I'm trying to remember right now, out of D E P, the D E P office for the environmental side of it. Uh, I have an L S P that we brought on board already, who's, uh, currently done close to sixty or seventy test holes in different areas, to see what's out there, to confirm what the reports are saying. And at a later date, that gentleman can, you know, I'll bring him in, he can kind of explain the process of what he goes through. So the, uh, so, uh, and I do really want to stress the Stop and Shop thing. You know, they, they bought the property, as everybody knows, back in early two thousand. They tried a lot of things, the economy fell apart on in two thousand and eight, as we all know. So that kind of fell flat on. The Cisco thing, that didn't, that didn't go through. The town decided what they wanted, you know, so now we're at this point here. And I think the biggest thing is, uh, you know, I look at the property, and I say, you know, what do I see there? And, you know, I'm looking at it with blinders, you know, because it's just me looking at it. But to hear what other people think we should do with it, I, I have been following social media, seeing what the ideas are coming out, there's been some interesting ones. But I think the biggest thing is, uh, we gotta get it cleaned up, we've gotta get this property so that, you know, it's something we can be proud of. One of the thoughts I had is maybe a campus-style retail slash residential component, so that it's almost like, uh, this, not to rent them all so much, but something that brings businesses into the areas that are just running on the main road itself, so it would have its own pocket inside. That's one of the things I kind of thought about, I, I like mom-and-pop type businesses. I'm not big on change, I, I kind of would rather see local people come in and try to do stuff up there, things like that. And I think that, and obviously I have to meet with every board, constatation, plan about all this, to stop pushing these ideas out there. And I would like to, as, uh, mentioned to the Selectmen, at some point, I would like to try to get a small committee going. You know, some at-large members, some, uh, public officials, uh, different people in town, maybe get together and meet on a monthly basis, and try to bring things back to the people, so, you know, forums like this don't always have to happen. But again, I'm here to hear what the concerns are, and answer whatever questions I can at this point. But as far as the other buildings, I don't know right now. I have hundreds in the White House, we're cleaning up the White House, it's been an eyesore for quite a while. And I think that, you know, we're cleaning up all the roads, you're gonna see some of the streetlights come on for, for better security out there. We have a few of them on now, but, uh, I'm very concerned about the neighboring, you know, the restaurant road residents out there. There's people coming from CBS and seventy-nine. So I thought the residential component would be nice at first, to try to get that going, to get the property occupied. So I'll give it back to the chair.
Great.
So, thank you.
Do you, do you want to start? Do you have questions, or?
Well, I can, we can go down this way, I'll do it any way you want. I have a few questions.
Okay.
Yeah. John Pauli, one of the Selectmen, and basically, it's not so many questions for Derek, but I've asked him to go back, uh, back in, I believe, April of two thousand and sixteen. A, a great presentation was put forward at the Lakeville Library by, I think it was Serpette.
Yes.
And, uh, they gave us a lot of proposals or suggestions as to what could be done with that site. Uh, some of it was interesting, some of it isn't doable, but they gave a lot of suggestions, so, uh, I'm sure that that meeting would still be on, uh, Lake Cam, so I would certainly imply that people should watch that. I certainly imply that Madeline and Derek should watch that. And there were some questions broached, a lot of the same neighbors that are here tonight were there. And, uh, it's, it's a big project, so I caution everyone to, uh, put in their ideas, but I'd like to start with, uh, certainly something that was on Lake Cam. And it was, uh, well-done, it took a, I think we met there for a couple of hours, and, uh, I'd asked people to view that, so you get a flavor of what was suggested by the, the professionals. I call them professionals, uh, as to what could go on that site. So, I don't have so many questions of Derek, I like his, uh, his idea of getting together with people. I, I do want to caution him that, that committees made up of private citizens with, with a private ownership. My, my, uh, past history is, that doesn't necessarily work, uh, because you'll, you'll outline twenty different things, the next meeting it's twenty different things, the next meeting is twenty different things after that. I'd like them to keep this forum, whether it's here, or whether it's at the high school, wherever, we can do it. But as they move along, to keep us all informed, as I think that they're graciously doing, they don't have to do this, they don't have to have a public hearing, it's private property, so, but, so I thank them for that. So I'd just like to start at the two thousand and sixteen suggestions. And that's really what I got to say. Give it a whirl.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just, on that note, is that available on the town website?
It, it, you could, should be able to get a CD right from, yes, 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 it should be. If it, if it isn't, Lake Cam's gonna look it up, uh, and make sure it's on there. It was taped by them.
Uh, should be most of our stuff that goes on Vimeo, so you can look up, uh, on Google, look up, you know, on Lake Cam, or Lake Cam on Vimeo.
Very specifically, look it up, make sure it's there. Yeah. Before they start digging, and it's not there.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Derek, I know that you, you had submitted some, some formes to, um, the planning board relative to residential on the seventy-nine side of the parcel, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, that's probably, can I, where do you want to see that? So, uh, this is, I want to turn a little bit so the board can see it. So the property, you have the one oh-five side here, then you have seventy-nine comes in, and this is the relocated seventy-nine. CBS, everybody knows is there, and then, of course, we got Baldi's here and Walgreens. And then the, the, I guess it would be the southerly side of the property is basically a straight line, kind of right in this area here. So there was, uh, what we're proposing, uh, some formes right along this area here. So it'll fit with that neighborhood, uh, there are residential houses on the other side, you have a restaurant on the left. So that's where we're at now. And I'm looking at this as a long-term commitment, so as we sell something and generate some revenue, it goes back into, uh, taking, for example, the superintendent's office down, excuse me, doctor's office that's down there. That's an environmental thing that needs to be cleaned up. So, this is, my commitment with Stop and Shop is, as I do things, the money's going back into the project. And then, once we do some more, then we're gonna probably look at doing something with the old children's hospital, because that's the next thing, and we're taking the, kind of taking bites out of the apple, little by little, and try to get the place cleaned up. But that would be all up, all up in this area here, where the houses go.
Okay, Mitzi, do you have, uh, questions?
So, you know, I think that we're all well-aware of what's going on, or who knows what's going on, really, with South Coast Rail. You know, and that's a big issue that we have also, and another topic on the agenda for tonight, to talk about the solar canopies that they're proposing, um, on the actual parking lot, when they decide, as they told us at the meeting in Middleborough, just, uh, last week or the week before, that they were planning on closing the Lakeville Station, which was the first that we had heard of it. But, so the study that was done in two thousand and sixteen, in April, it's, it's somewhat ironic, because the project funding was from funds provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Mass DOT South Coast Rail Project. So, um, just to kind of add more irony to the fire. But I think, you know, what we're looking at is a, an area in Lakeville that is... I, I honestly don't know that I can speak any louder, due to... Someone can just speak for me.
Percussive maintenance.
You know what I'm saying?
Nah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. I, I wish I could speak louder right now, but my voice isn't actually allowing me to.
Do if you stand up.
Yeah. I'll try. I, I just want to say that, um, you know, what we're looking at is we have a lot of potential development that is happening, a lot of activity that is going on in this area, of which we don't really have any clear answers to any of this. So I think it's just important to kind of keep an open mind, and I know, you know, I applaud you for coming in front and trying to get and solicit some feedback, because you certainly don't have to. So I, you know, I appreciate knowing that, just as a citizen of Lakeville, more than anything else, so, um, that's really kind of all I have to say. So that's really kind of all I have to say.
This isn't going to work.
It's not going to work.
All right. We can edit. I think everyone's ready now. I don't even know if I can get it.
Okay. So, does anybody have questions? Raise your hand, identify yourself. Oh, way in the back, Dick.
I can make lots of noise.
Come, come a little closer and identify yourself, please.
First of all, Derek, I've got to applaud your...
Or don't.
...integrity in getting the project off dead center. And I'd like to thank you for doing that publicly. I'd also like to offer whatever assistance I can. I've been appointed the mayor of Rush Pond Road. And other than Route 79, we cover a portion that's been longstanding residential, as has Route 79 and 105. And I just want you to know that the existing zoning that was worked out with Stop and Shop's developer, National, did go through the planning board, there were a lot of hearings. And we basically came up with, quote, a mixed-use project. And when Serpide made their presentation, I believe the chairman of the planning board commented on the fact that a lot of activities had taken place to reflect the zoning that was adopted at town meeting for a mixed use. And, and we all know what that proposal was. So as people look at the Serpide tape, I'd like them to also look at the existing zoning because it is the last time there was a public vote that adopted zoning required for the Stop and Shop's developer to proceed. I've heard certain things that you've talked about on media with regard to demo and possible reuse of the buildings, and certainly that's cost avoidance. And what I heard discussed was medical. And if we were to look at our town globally, we have senior housing requirements that are being met by certain senior housing developers. Certainly, the residential zoning of that property was reflected as senior housing. And while we may not adopt exclusive senior housing, I think it's important that there should be some component of senior housing, particularly if we go any higher density than what's in the current bylaws of a property. With regard to the environmental issues, the LSP, which is, for the people who don't know, a licensed site professional, he's basically going to counsel you as to what the law requires as you go forward. And I think you should be applauded for that, too, because there have been environmental concerns. And the fact that you're doing the test boards attests to the fact that you're not just taking what's gone before, you are now the owner, and therefore you are in the chain of liability. And you're taking what I would consider is protective for you and the town. You should be applauded for that. One other component that I'd like you to consider is, there's been a lot of activity with regard to the Open Space Committee. And the Open Space Committee is good for the town because it provides open space. It's good for the mixed-use development because as we do higher densities, it should be offset. And certainly, there is a significant wetland area. So in that regard, as you meet with the Conservation Committee, whether we have the ad hoc committees, or it's strictly through town committees, or through the selectment committees, I'm, I'm just saying that that wetland component should have a high input from CONCOM and the Open Space Committee because you can't build on it anyway, and it could be a tremendous attribute to the town as we, as we move forward. And once again, thank you, thank you for having this meeting, and I'm real pleased you took the initiative.
Well, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I want to add to that, Mr. Scott. One of the things that I'm using as my, my bible, let's say, is the mixed-use zoning that was put forth. Because it doesn't make sense for me to try to reinvent the wheel. I mean, it's been decided what the town wants, just as, just as the other documents out of here. And it's just, it's a guideline for me to go forward, if my wife and I go forward with this. And it all makes sense, you know? It was thought out. It doesn't make any sense for me to try to reinvent the wheel. And I know one of the components was housing, 55 and older. And just so folks know, that's not a fine view, anyone 55 and older can move in a house. And I had thought, in one instance, one of the, you know, brain parts that I've had, is there's a very tall building off to the back here, that used to be the nurses' quarters. And I thought that might be a nice place for 55 and older, one, two-bedroom units. It's a seven-story building. Again, it would have to get all approved. But that was kind of a thought, I, I thought it would fit the need for a lot of us older folks in Lakeville that want to go to Florida and come back and don't own two houses. So I, that's one of the first things I think I'm going to start really seriously looking at, and see if something like that works for that area.
Thank you.
Sir?
Eric Lazey Kingdom. Just curious, on a project like this, anytime residential, regardless of age or situation, it puts burdens on the town as far as police, EMS, you know, water. What's being done, or what would be your goals as far as trying to offset the cost to the town as a result of the residential component?
Well, I think because I'm going to be doing mixed use, which is going to be a lot of commercial, light industrial, there's going to be a lot of tax revenue involved in town coming from that, just instead of the tax revenue that it generates now, which is, well, that size property isn't really that much. But the mix is what we're trying to do. The 55 and older, in my opinion, would be geared more towards, you know, singles, couples, something like that. I'm kind of looking like a condo-type, like you go to Florida, you get the condos with the pools, tennis, that kind of environment, where I'm not looking for that particular building to be a place for kids, no offense. But there are other, you know, components like the housing on 79 that could do that. So I'm not looking at it being a real big place, bringing a lot of, a lot of schoolchildren out, I don't want those schools, because I know that's a burden. And as far as the policing, firing, we have our own security and stuff. That is one thing I did want to mention, mention on the fire side. Middleborough graciously has allowed us to leave the hydrants on, so that we, we actually, I had the chief, both chiefs involved, we tested the hydrants, made sure they work, so that they know that in case there is a problem from this point on, that they have fire protection. So, and that was just on the, no agreement, just a temporary basis until we come up with some plan down the road as far as longer stuff. So thank you.
Thanks. John?
Yeah, I just have another point to make. We're here on Derek's and Madeline's proposal, but there is other development that will possibly go on in the Lakeville Corporate Park. So I ask you all to view those hearings on Lake Cam also, so you understand perhaps what other builders are doing, what the selectmen are trying to do regarding zoning, that they may have different proposals coming up at the June Town Meeting. So there's a lot of activity. It's certainly not on the agenda to talk about the other items, but I certainly don't just be involved in Derek's project because there's other substantial projects going on in that same area. So you can certainly look at the agendas and you could look at Lake Cam. So I wanted to mention that because there's other proposals of, of not mixed businesses, but mixed homes, whether they're single-family duplexes, senior homes, that type of thing. So there's a lot of activity going on beyond Derek and Madeline's proposal or suggestions. Thank you.
Nelson?
Nelson Pratt, yeah, he's like, Derek, I applaud you for getting this group together. Thank you for what you've tried to mission. I feel a little awkward in asking this question because it's a private investment, where I'm not part of that investment.
Follow Madeline.
So feel free to help me with my business.
No, that's fine.
But you mentioned in your, in your statement that you were going to piecemeal this development over some period of time, get that. With that in mind, developing five or six house lots on Route 79 will get a very limited amount of money in relation to what you said was a $6.9 million cleanup. Then I look at, well, what, what happens next? So we develop some properties along 105, that still probably leaves you quite short of the $6.9 million cleanup, which is in the center of, basically in the center of the property, for the most part. So how do you get from where you are today to $6.9 million cleanup value? How do you get from here to there by just selling six lots on 79, so many lots on 105? And if you end up short of the $6.9 to clean it up, what happens then?
Well, uh...
And let me just, it's sort of like the elephant in the room, because I've had conversations with the folks in that, and there are, there are many folks that they go, we sell off 79, we sell off the 105, and there's no money left, so Derek goes home and leaves the town theoretically with that $6.9 cleanup that's never really been done. I'm not accusing you, I'm not, I'm not saying that's how to play, because I don't think it is. But how do you, how do you give us some sense of comfort that the $6.9 million will come from somewhere?
So, first of all, my conversations with the DEP is, I'm going to propose and work with them on a plan of how we're going to, you know, basically take each bite out of the apple. So first thing would be the lots on 79, and try to take care of, like, the small doctor's office, and try to abate the, the old children's hospital off to the side there. So the money's going to go from here right to there. The next thing would be is, if we look at the tall building and what has to be done in there, that one there is a $500,000 cleanup for that building itself. And so you take that, you, you budget how many units you can possibly get in there. So that one really is going to pay for itself, through that building, through selling the condos and things like that. You know what I'm saying? The nurses' quarters. And, and again, spec, I'm just being speculative that, that gets approved, the plan of it. If, it could be something else, it could, if the town decides they want an office building there, it could turn into an office building. If it's more feasible to take it down and have someone, a commercial entity or something come in there, do something there, that could be another option. But the idea is to, I've analyzed the demo, there's, there's two ways of doing demolition. There's straight-out demolition, and then there's selective demolition. So on that nurses' quarters, that would be more of a selective demolition, where you would abate all the asbestos. There's asbestos like in the tiles, the nasty glue that holds the tiles down. There'll be asbestos in the caulk in for all the windows. And you look at all those individual components, which I have all the numbers for already. Thankfully, it was already done twice before. So I have pretty good numbers on that. So now I can budget that into what that project's going to take to rehab, for example. And then do the same, kind of the same, I'm going with the house up front. We have a certain amount of rep, of abatement that we have to do on the house up front, with some of the heat pipes and things. So we're going to do that as we're going, going through that process. Then you get to the big building, which is the, the biggest elephant in the room. And, and it's kind of the same thing. What I'd like to see there, if I had, would be something medically related, whether it's doctor's office, maybe commercial on the first floor or something, you know, and try to utilize a lot of the existing park. I don't really want to go in and destroy the site. I kind of like it as a campus. I like the way the park is set up, I like the way the roads are set up. And I think adding commercial entities inside the property and not on 105. I mean, I look at the grass in front of the hospital, and I really don't want to see anything there. You know, I kind of, I like that view. So, and that, that's how I'm going to kind of piece it in, and I'm kind of thinking about what these costs are, and then how it's going to work in the budget for each building.
Time money kind of conversation for a second. Time is money. Do you have a timeline on any of these steps going forward?
If I was to throw something out there, I guess probably within a year or two, I'd like to start breaking ground on the taller building, the residential component of it. And again, I can't speak for the planning board or the town or what they want, but that's just what I would try to pitch. They might, tonight we might hear a different idea that might work better for that. But I would probably, the larger building itself, probably use that more for storage until something came along, whether it be medical, you know, maybe a married hotel might come along and say, hey, this is a good spot for us here. You know, because they're getting in the process of rehab in old buildings now. That's kind of their thing. So something like that, and if we can find someone that has a better plan for that. The cleanup is really the minor part when you get into the restoration of it. There's a lot more money just to be spent inside after you abate it. So it's just going to be piecemeal, that'll probably, you know, you're probably looking at four or five years down the road. I'm not going to drag this out forever, I'm not going to live that long. But my goal is to stay in it to the end. That is our plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bridger Camera. You mentioned the $6.9 million cleanup. What does that entail?
That entails, for example, the big building in the back. And these are numbers that were provided to be through Stop and Shop by their licensed site professional. And in the larger building, the $6.9 entails taking everything down, demolishing everything, hauling everything away to Ohio, wherever they want to send it. Then you have the other options of selective demo. So if there's a building, like, for example, the back, the nurses' quarters, and it's structurally sound, and it fits the plan of residential housing, which is what I'm thinking of, then that goes from being, let's say, a million and a half cleanup to $500,000 cleanup. So it changes...
Plus the renovation.
Then you add the renovations, correct.
So you're saying that the buil, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
No, yeah.
The building is structurally sound, has that been identified yet?
No, that is part of the process. So if for some reason we get there and, and a structural engineer says, you know, the footings are just gone, then we go down the other avenue where we look at a tenant that might want to come in, purchase the prop, that one particular property, and take that building down and start from scratch. So that's kind of how we have to look at all of it, because I can't speak for a structural engineer. You know, personally, I like the looks of those buildings. I don't think you're going to build a building like that, nurses' quarters, ever again, for the, for the cost that they put in. No one builds like they built back then. It would be a wooden structure today if someone did it.
And what about the main building?
And the main building's the same process. That one is 250,000 square per building. That is a one-point, because it's $6.9 total, so I'm not exactly, it's, it's about a $2.5 million tear-down to tear that one down and to abate the whole property. Or it turns into a, like a 1.4, 1.5 cleanup inside. And it can be done both, you can do both. You can decide that the boiler room might be, have too much contaminant in there, and it might be a section you want to get rid of. So you would, you abate that, you'd get rid of that section of the building. So I'm, I'm going to try to find a tenant that fits, and then say to them, how do you want to do this? And, you know, whether it be a medical center, commercial, retail, or whatever. So it's very subjective how we're going to go about it, but I am aware of the cost. Like I said, I've been in this business for years, I understand what it takes to abate a building, and what it takes for the demolition, and to remove all this stuff.
The, you just had the six lots approved on 79 by the planning board. And one of those lots entails the landfill that's on the site. What are you going to do about it, or what does DEP say you have to do about it?
That, that's actually not one of the six lots, that's actually a parcel outside.
Yeah, okay, but it's a lot. It's a lot that has been approved as a whammy lot.
No, it hasn't.
It's not a billable lot.
No, it's not, okay, yeah, it's not a billable lot, just so nobody thinks that I want to put a house on it. No, and that's something where I, I have to sit down with DEP. They've already, Stop and Shop's been through the whole process with DEP. They have criteria of what they want to do. There's a process to actually get in there, clean it, screen it, get rid of, you'll put the brick debris in one dumpster, you'll get rid of the metal in another one, get rid of the construction material in another one. And then the whole time, the LSP's controlling the job. The LSP is deciding how deep you want to go, which direction you want to go. Right now, there are monitoring wells that have been there for, for probably since 2005, '06. So whatever we do there will be based on Army Corps, DEP, the town, conservation, anyone that needs to be involved in it. And we just go through it and try to, try to do the best we can to clean it up, and get, we want our idea, ideal situation, get a clean bill of health on.
Does that mean clean it up, or does that mean...
Whatever DEP tells. If they tell me to clean, if they tell me they want me to take it all down, put asphalt there, that's what we do. You don't argue with DEP, just do what they want.
Please, one more question. All three selectmen pointed out that the, the area itself is, you know, going to be developed in other sections across the street, and so forth and so on. And one of my major concerns is that, I think we need to look at a plan of what's going to be done there for traffic purposes and so forth and so on, because it's going to be a very busy area. I personally don't like the idea of going, I know the houses have already been approved, I'm, I'm okay with that. But doing other areas piecemeal without...
But doing other areas piecemeal without understanding what the master plan is for that property is gonna create a traffic nightmare. Also, with the T station moving over to Middleborough on the other side of 495. And I don't have to tell you about Bridge Street. I mean, Bridge Street is a disaster right now. So from my perspective, and I think from the town's perspective, we ought to have a master plan before this goes forward.
Well, I want to add to that. I know I had a conversation with Rich about that very topic. And when this was originally going to be Stop and Shop and whatnot, that was, one of the aspects of that plan was that there would be traffic lights at Bridge Street. And I think, was it Vaughn as well? So, I mean, I personally think that if development along 105 is to happen, I would like to see some sort of traffic mitigation for the sake of trying to improve the traffic flow there. I mean, it is, depending on when you drive, it's really bad now.
I agree.
That's one aspect that I agree with in terms of pointing out there's a need for that.
I just want to say, you know, to that end also, I'm gonna try to yell, sorry. Also, to that end, I believe that when Bob Pelucci, who brought that 40B to the planning board, when he explained it, I believe that one of the things that the planning board would have liked to have seen also was a traffic study for that very reason. And every time that we have had those conversations with South Coast Rail, we've been asking them for what the traffic study is gonna look like on the corridor of 105. And they keep telling us that they're going to require it, but they haven't done it yet. I think some of it's gonna be out of our control, unfortunately, because we don't really have any idea what NASS DOT is going to do with that station. They seem to be fairly ambiguous with what their plans might be. But I think that, you know, certainly to your point, it's, you know, it's something where we're looking at congestion. We already know that there's some problem areas that happen in that area. So, yeah, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, and if I may, obviously, NASS DOT would have to be involved, obviously, from the start on this, because they're the ones that, if we do anything, it's gonna exit on the road that they take care of. So if they say this is, you know, they need a traffic light, who am I? That's what they get. I mean, you can't act you up.
Right, right. Dick, I'm gonna let some new people speak.
I just want, I just had a call up.
Okay, sure, go.
The last time we had CAKO here talking about how the state and economic development and ground field money might come available, when you started talking about traffic mitigation, it seems to me, in light of what Mr. Powerly said with regard to the development in that corridor, I think one of the things that Derek, even speaking to the $6.9 demo money, it seems to me, the way CAKO left it, was there was no interest by Stop and Shop and National Development, and therefore, we were at a standstill. It seems we've broken that bottleneck. So it may be appropriate for the selectmen to approach CAKO and see what the Economic Development Group and/or any state cleanup money. At the point that you're doing studies, you have to have what Rich had. You have to have the quote "master plan" in order to have it as a basis. So it seems to me, instead of, the LLC pill went out all the money for the demo and the studies and the environmental cleanup. It may be appropriate for us to revisit what state resources could be brought to bear to assist you with this project, especially at the point where we're actually trying to do traffic mitigation studies. We really need to know, because if you're gonna meet that four- to five-year, and let's just say it's five-year master plan, you're gonna have to have some, I believe, state and/or town assistance from somewhere. I mean, it just, the cleanup, the demo, and then the development, it just seems to me that there should be some resources to assist you in that.
And I did put a call up to Representative Kekulah as well, so.
And, I mean, we wrote a letter to Governor Baker, too, regarding the issues, again, that we're having with NASS DOT related to this whole area and what that's gonna look like. So certainly, I think that's something to bring up if we ever get a response that, you know, which I have, we have a letter today that came in. Did they want a meeting?
The state left us this. This wasn't like those, the state left us this building, these buildings. It'd be nice if they helped us a little bit.
Sir?
This is a great letter.
Frank Starett, Chris Drive, a couple of things. Derek, I would love to see something nice from the hospital property. I'm scared to death a little bit. I was told by a family member of someone who was working billions of pounds at the hospital and was still going. I'm fairly familiar with that hospital. I was actually a patient there for shattered ankles back in the early 1980s. And yes, it's linoleum floors and everything. I was told that there was a dump back there. And, yeah, everything from desks to possible medical waste. Do you know anything about that? Have you heard anything about that, number one?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, that was part of what Mr. Richard LaCamera brought up earlier, what they call the landfill area. It's about 1.6 acres in size. At some places, it's 30 feet deep, some is nine, some is 13. So there's a huge document on exactly what's in there. And basically, a lot of it is, like you said, wood debris. There's ties in there, there's, I've seen, I've paid dishwashers or wash machines, things like that. So there is a lot of stuff in there. But what I'm hearing is the soils underneath are fine, but I still want to verify for myself.
Okay, second, traffic mitigation. Very fancy word, traffic engineers use to make it sound nice, okay? This is going in quite thoroughly, ZBA hearings on the New Seasons gas station. And we're gonna try some mitigation. Now, the first one is you make the lights longer, the light cycles. So it slows people up, okay? And then it'll move to more lights back down 105. And at some point, you're gonna make that a miserable commute with four or five lights to go three-quarters of a mile. You need to be very careful.
Derek, it is miserable.
And the third, the third thing I'd like to suggest to you, Chairman Burke, is that this is a fairly hot-button item, the hospital property, and there's a lot of interest in it by an awful lot of people. And I would like to make a recommendation that the front panel, maybe this is you, Reid, I don't know, on your town homepage, maybe we just do a hospital project with a link. And we put the Vimeo link. So instead of making people hunt for that stuff, it's on under hospital. Oh, boom, there's the thing they talked about at the meeting. And I'm working toward a goal of making sure the people sitting here get the same information, look at the same pictures. You all have nice documents, right before every meeting. We run off nice documents, everybody knows it. And you have a little map that says parcel 13A on this, and the rest of us are going, that's parcel 13B. So maybe we can make some effort in there. It's not a big deal to put links on that homepage.
Right, no, I think that's our intent, certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
I'm Barbara Mykowsky, I'm on the planning board. My only question is, are you using an architect now? And if so, who are they? And have they worked on anything this size?
No, I'm not using an architect. I haven't got to that step yet. But my first step is to work with the LSP to inspect the whole building, the area and all that. And then the structural engineer to make sure that the building can even handle any remodeling, and then go to the architect level with that. I'll try to come up with some renditions at some point. I kind of wish I would have more today. But this, I'm still, it's still in its infancy stage for me. I mean, I'm just getting off the ground with this myself, but I will have all that, so people can see that.
Sir?
Brian Dale of Quandra. Relatively new resident of Lakeville by year now, grew up in the area. Just want to say it's great to see a local person actually dove in and took on this nightmare. Since we moved in and drove down 105, it's been like, why the hell is this? Nothing's happened here. So it's great, there's so many things I gotta do, something. Lots of great civil discussion here, good questions, everything, same concerns. You also asked at the beginning, do you want to hear ideas? So I think it'd be great. I mean, I don't know how many more spaces we have this close to a highway. We heard earlier from the assessors, 86.5% of our tax base is residential, which means basically the town sits on our shoulders, and it's only gonna get more expensive over the years. I'd love to see mixed-use, some commercial in there, restaurants, whatever. Satellite from one of the rehab hospitals in Boston, walk-in clinic. If you look at places like Market Street in Lynnfield, or maybe on a smaller scale, not as big, we've got Rush Pond Road right there, and some, I'm residents, but places like Legacy Place and Dead End War, much smaller scale, Patriot, like, things like that campus feel. You're outside and walking around, you've got a restaurant you can sit at while you're waiting for a doctor's appointment. Or you've got a condo on the backside like Market Street has now. Like, yeah, I mean, I like that type of idea as long as it kind of still fits that Lakeville feel, why we moved here. So, yeah, I hope other people give you some ideas, because I want to see it be successful and something nice.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to figure out how we can get those ideas to me. If, you know, for example, if someone knows somebody that is in the medical research type, and they know someone that's looking for something, you know. I need to, we need to figure out an avenue how you guys can get the information to me, look in the ideas, so that I'm hearing all this. I'm not, I'm almost taking social media, but that sometimes gets a little astray. I would actually ask if maybe the town could take the input. And I don't know how that would work, Aaron, but, like, one person in the town that could kind of bounce the stuff back to me, or?
I was just gonna say, you know, when I sat on the Economic Development Committee, we put out a survey that happened, I think, how was that, 2013 at this point? So, you know, and that survey was, it solicited a lot of feedback, and a lot of it was funny. You know, it's pretty similar to what you might get in social media. There was a lot of really good stuff. And then there were some comments that you had to kind of wade through to understand what was going on. But it really was talking about what type of development that people wanted in Lakeville. And it's still available, actually, on the town's website if you go and take a look at the results from the Economic Development Survey. But that might be something that could be done. The problem with something like that is that it turns into a very manual process, because it's all just complete feedback coming through. But that is a mechanism that might be able to, you know, be facilitated.
Yeah, I was, I was approached recently. Someone wanted to do some sort of a business there, and I can't speak. It's just a small business, a nonprofit business. But it took them a while to try to figure out how to get to me, I guess, because I don't have a for-sale sign up front. So maybe what I'll get, what I'll get done is I'll put something up front that identifies me, identifies the engineer, the survey, and those folks, so that if anyone has a question, they can go directly to that source, or directly to me, my information would be there as well. Because I really, if someone knows somebody that is looking for a condo, for example, you know, I'd like to start a list on who's interested and stuff like that. Or maybe a medical center type person, because in a long, it helps me, but it helps all of us, I think, to get somebody local, you know, get the information in there.
Just like to ask, would you include your email and/or URL?
Yeah, my email's pretty simple. It's dmaxy@comcast.net, but it's M-A-K-S-Y. Everybody spells it wrong, but, and feel free to use it.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
I have a lot of ideas. You were saying that you were...
Hold on, Barbara.
You were saying, my name is Kamiya, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And I live in Lakeville. So my idea is that he could have a link, so you know, you're gonna post a link on your website, the town website, with the project. You could have contact us, so we'd go straight to him. So every matter, I mean, people could comment there, or ideas, or... I think that'll be much easier than having to go back and pull it out.
Sure, thank you. Barbara?
My feedback from having worked in the development world would be, try to keep that business out of the town, because that's not really the town's purview. But maybe if you had a separate email, you know, it's easier for people that like the hospital, they don't need to know you, they can just know.
Well, I want them, I want everyone to develop, that's all. That's why I'm here today. I mean, it is, I wouldn't be here if this wasn't something, my hat wasn't set on, you know, so. And it was previous slip, and everybody knew how to get hold of me anyways, but... But I do agree on mixed in private with public. There needs to be a separation there, so it doesn't look like, your tax dollars are going towards this project, but that can't happen. You can't let that. Please be careful.
Sir?
Michael Goddini, Island Road. My only thing is the, the one thing I wouldn't want to see there would be apartments. The reason being is just the schools. Seeing class size go up and things like that would be something the schools are already gonna go up in a lot of money in the town. And they have a history of two-and-a-half overrides and things like that for the schools. And to see more apartments develop that tax revenue would be a concern.
And my wife is taking notes, so I am getting all this.
My name is Rich Schneider, I live on Deerfield Lane. I just have a question for you, and that is, at what point in time do you know if you can separate the parcels from the original plot of land? And where does the final approval come from to do such a project so that you can separate and obviously get banks involved with mortgages and allowing them to buy these parcels without separating them from the whole contaminated project? And what happens if you can't? Where do you go from then if you can only put some houses in, and then you have the rest left? You know, that's just a question I have.
Thanks.
I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think because it's under the mixed-use development zone, I believe that this committee on authorities planning board for, because zoning board does other, but I think under this article, it's planning board for the special permit and for also the...
Yeah, I know it's...
There is one of the boards in town.
Nate nodded. Yes, so he's planning board.
So if there's a planning board process here, which you're elected officials, and will then look at the plans and decide if they meet or don't meet through the plan.
That's town, how about state of...
We went from the state.
Well, I thought that, you know, I don't think that it's just town. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, town bylaws have to comply with the state law.
But I mean, it has to pass both, right? Town and state?
If the town, if it fits our bylaws, I think it's...
Right, well, Barbara's on the planning board.
Yeah, she's serious, man.
Sure, no, but, no, I guess the point is, is that depending on what is proposed, there's little oversight. If it's a Form A, for example, there's really no oversight. If it complies with zoning, it's an approval-not-required plan, and the plan can happen as is. If Derek were to propose something that did not conform with zoning, for example, he'd have to propose a zoning change, and that's a big deal. You gotta go to town meeting, you gotta get two-thirds vote. That's very hard to do. So I think what he's explaining is his goal is to stay within the existing zoning. And if he were to propose something that required approval from the planning board, they would be the authority that would oversee that process.
Now, I guess my question really is, does the whole site have to be cleaned up in order for you to set up separate parcels and house lots? Or will that be able to be separated and done as needed?
I think currently, I think in 2006, maybe, the, this whole parcel was cut into seven smaller parcels, two of which went to the town for part of the 79 relocation. So basically, it leaves the five parcels that are left. The big building's on one, the rear building's on the other one. The 79 side is on, was on a separate piece. So it has been subdivided back in sometime 2006 to that area. But either way, the whole, you know, any cleanup has to be done. And it, you know, and I'm committed to do whatever has to be done. I am aware of all the cleanup that has to be done, but I know it's also gonna be surprises.
Yeah. But I think Rick's question is, if you get a clean bill of health on the Form As on 79, you can just sell them without the 21e liability passing to the grantee?
Yeah, I, okay, yeah. And, right now, I can sell you this whole property without having to meet any, it would be up to the bank to decide what they did.
Correct.
But my commitment to Stop and Shop was to personally say, I am gonna clean these things up before anything gets sold. If I don't clean it up, I end up, it ends up my property until I can clean it up.
Wait until the grave is... Wait until the grave.
Exactly, yeah. So it's, until it's cleaned up, it's not going anywhere.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, sir? Huh, sir? I know it's you.
Uh, the, um, the, the truth lies somewhere in that the, if you don't want to go to town meeting, which for a practical case, you probably, you're probably gonna wind up in front of town meeting committee, but to me, that doesn't make it. Uh, if you don't want to go to town meeting, uh, you expect some overlay district and some base zoning. The base zoning doesn't make any money really. The overlay district, not, but they all have limitations in how small you're allowed to use it, how small a bike you can take. And the bikes, for instance, and some of those are 25 acres at a time. So you have to plan 25 acres at once. And then now you're into traffic right away, you know, the, the, that kicks it into there, kicks into, uh, all the, uh, being all the common cons, things like that. It's just a big enough piece if you want to be using the overlay district, which is the mixed-use one. If you just want to use the Form A, like, uh, use so far, just the residential or business, but depending on which street you're on, uh, well, then, you know, that's a lot easier, but it's a lot, on the other hand, it's a lot harder because you're using up your personal property.
Right.
Uh, but, and then as soon as any, as soon as you get inside the property, uh, it all turns into site plan review. So there's plenty of looks. There's many more looks for all the folks that are here. You're gonna, you're gonna see this again, 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 again. Uh, this, this, you know, the planning's...
Don't get tired of seeing me, is that what you said?
Well, no, the, the, the planning, the planning, it is pretty difficult because, you know, under the overlay, I mean, it's a big chunk that you're planning at one. It's not just a lot that, you know, have one building. You're not planning one building at a time, except when you're making a thorough, you know, when you're making a road, when you're doing just the Form A. But anything else is more complicated.
He's also, you can do it.
All right.
Say something before you can.
Yeah, do you?
Just, no.
Oh, what?
Yeah, no, just...
Oh.
Sir? Yeah, 225 State Street.
Um, I'm confused on Rhode Island Road, the lots, uh, is he able to collect money on those lots right away, uh, today? And go right around to 105, Mr. Chairman, and get the money for those lots right away?
Right. Um, I, I don't know. I, I would assume so if they're separate lots, right? And that's what you indicated, or, or separate parcels, I should say. So there's five separate parcels?
Uh, there's six Form A buildable house lots.
No, no, I mean, in terms of like...
Oh, five total separate parcels, yes.
Right. So on that separate parcel that contains the Form As, for example, if you can prove that that's clean, and I'm assuming that that's why you've dug those test holes, right? Then you, he could sell that portion of it.
Yeah, the separate house lots.
Correct.
Put the money in his pocket.
Well, yeah, I mean, he bought the property, that's why people buy property.
I just try to understand, okay?
Yep.
And then he can come right around to 105 where the lots are, okay? And I believe he can sell them also and put the money in his pocket. Whoever owns it can put the money in his pocket, okay?
Right, if it's a Form A.
You have no concern?
I have no concern.
No, no, guys, guys, we're not gonna start down this road, so ask your question and we'll, we'll move on.
I have another question.
Yep.
Okay, um, so if, if, my concern is, uh, I just want to make something funny here, right? This hand is upset. This hand, um, says, go for it, right? Just like you talked about two-barrel carburetors and four-barrel, okay?
Yep.
So my concern is if, uh, whoever owns this property takes the money and puts it in his pocket and, and takes off, right? We're stuck with the liability, okay? So I guess, um, this hand says, do we, before he sells anything, do we ask for a performance bond? Tonight is, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, what do you think about this, the audience? What do you think about that? That's a great idea, but when a contractor comes in to you and I, right, and says, this is my plan, this is what I'm gonna do, right? What do you think about it, okay? But this, um, um, company, whoever owns it, right, is saying, you know what he's saying tonight, right? And I, it's, and no disrespect, but it seems very, um, wishy-washy, whatever you want to call it. So I'm just asking two things that...
Right, so, yeah, I, I think I understand your question. The question is, what can the town try to do to offset the risk of eventually assuming the liability for cleanup?
Right.
That is, I'm just trying to paraphrase it.
If, if, if he sells, sells those lots on 79, comes right down to 105, sells those lots and then says, see you later, right? See you later, and then we're stuck with the liability. So I'm asking before he sells, the company sells any lots, that we get a, a bond, okay? The bond, how the...
Right, but, well, to answer your question, when you do a Form A, it's an approval not required. You, you really don't have any leverage. And I would, I would speak, and I don't want to speak for the planning board, but that's my understanding, is that they can't require a bond of any sort for what's called an approval not required plan because if they don't act on it, it's approved through a, a time period, it's automatically approved. They simply get the lot if it conforms to zoning. So there's no, no, um, leverage on the part of, of a town committee to, to do too much, um, when it's a Form A.
Okay, so, so the company can come in and sell those lots and then let, leave us hanging, okay? So he sells the lots, or the company sells the lots, right? We can't do anything about it, but can we say, okay, until you make up your mind, we know it's gonna be a cleanup of six, uh, six million dollars roughly, right? That we have a bond for that, so whatever happens there, we know that we have insurance policy that the place is gonna be cleaned up. It's not gonna be left behind, it on the taxpayer.
Right. Um, I don't know, does anybody have an answer to that question? That, that the answer is yes, Rich?
No, the answer is no.
Okay.
But I just want to clarify something. The Form A lots on, on 79 are residential lots. If, if Derek comes in and asks for commercial lots on 105, correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, he has to go through site plan review with the planning board. So there is some control from the town having to do with commercial lots, not residential lots. If he sold everything on residential all the way around as Form A lots, the answer is no. But if he comes in and he says on 105, I want to divide that into 10 commercial lots, he's gotta go in front of the planning board for a site plan review, which then the planning board has control over those lots.
Yeah, but not what's behind.
Not what's behind, not at that point, no.
Right. So that's your answer?
Okay, all right. Um, but what about the bond for the, uh, hospital, right? Before we take one step further?
No, no, I think that was Rich's, first answer was no, correct? Relative to a bond. There's, there's no, there's no mechanism by which we could require a private landowner to put a performance bond up for an anticipated cost when he could decide to never tear those buildings down and never incur that liability.
Were you saying, Richard, on the lots?
Okay, there's two, there's two breakups. One is the residential lots, which is the one he just did on 79. And I think it's five or six lots, which has already been approved by the county, right, Barbara? Now, so if he decides that, oh geez, I can't sell these commercial lots, then he can go and...
The residential ones.
Excuse me, residential lots. And then he says, well, you know, I'm gonna put all residential on 105.
Commercial.
Com, well, either way.
Yeah, residential or commercial, yeah.
That's on the street side.
On the street side. But if he decides, you know, geez, this isn't going too well, I'm just gonna subdivide those as the residential lots, he can do that.
Okay, all right, I understand that, but I'm, I, I, I don't know if I'm, I'm getting like, but the hospital would sell, say it's 25 acres, right? The buildings and everything.
Yep.
Right? That we get a bond to make sure that is taken care of, okay?
No, my point is, is that he doesn't have to do anything to the hospital ever.
Yeah, but it's, it's to protect the residents, right? He might...
No, no, but as a private landowner, you can own a parcel of land with a building on it and it can be a structure that is not used, it's in abandoned use. And as long as you secure the parcel, um, from a nuisance, attractive nuisance or, or whatnot, but even that's really held to a civil standard, there's no, um, there, there's nothing you can do to, to obligate someone to, to do, do a performance bond to perform something that they're not even proposing they do.
Yeah, but this, this is a, um, I guess in a kind, in a sense, is it has this waste site? I don't know, you know, you really can't say that, right?
No.
But, um, it's a, a different, different, um, situation. It's, you know, okay, so if somebody wanted to put a, um, dig out a cranberry bog, you would ask them for a bond, okay? For a bond to make sure they fulfilled what they would said they were gonna do. So that's all I'm saying.
Right. He hasn't formally proposed anything.
Yeah, okay.
But you know, that's, that's the, that's the distinction is, is if he, if he formally proposed a plan to the planning board to say, I want to do X, Y, and Z, they would absolutely have a, a bonding element to, or a bond element to that, that proposal. Like, I would assume, correct?
So I'm too new to answer that question, I don't know. Maybe Zink can answer that question, but before...
Zink, does that, you want to just touch on that?
We have to have a reason. Uh, of course, we can ask someone to bond Zink, but we have to have a good reason to do it. Uh, we have to anticipate that if they don't, you know, if they're trying to sell some of the lots on the inside of, uh, then we have, we, we would bond the idea, we would bond the completion of the road to the lots. That is the most common thing. Or we would bond the completion of the electric service to the lots, um, things like that. Or we, or we would bond, I, I suppose, we, we could bond, uh, you know, cleaning up some part of it, but that would have to be negotiated with the owner after he, after he decided what he was going to do, what, what he was going to build. Uh, you know, but, but that, that, that's a, it's a negotiated process in every single case of all of those bonds and it's, uh, and it's supervised by, the, the reason, we don't really have, the reason we say state is because most of the rules that we enforce and work by are state rules, not Lakeville rules. I mean, when it gets into this land, it's, it's all state stuff and we're, we're obliged to not overcharge somebody. We, we can't charge somebody enough on a bond to make them not do the job because the bond costs so much. It has to be a realistic bond and everything, and it, there's, there's, there's constraints on everybody, but they're negotiated.
Thank you.
Can I have one more question or, or let this guy go?
I, I don't know, I mean, is it relative to the...
Yes, yes, okay.
Cause we, we really gotta wrap this up.
Okay, I have a proposal, okay? You know, he wants some ideas and everybody has some ideas. What I want to do is take the property over, eminent domain, okay? And put the police station there, okay? And, uh, a further growth of, we're gonna aim to school and a possible fire station and maybe a DPW, okay? So we take that, um, property over. I think right now the police station is eight million dollars and it's no cap on it, right? So if we take, take the property and just take the, um, the money, eight thou, eight million dollars, take six million out of that, take, take it down what you have to take down and, uh, put the police station right out in front, further growth for a school and, uh, and possible a fire station. We're gonna have hot new buildings across the street, we're gonna need protection over there and, um, and fire, okay? So that's my proposal. If anybody backs me up, I want to start a petition so we can get a special town meeting, get it over, get it going, so...
I wish you luck with that.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. I don't know if any, any of you support me or anybody out here that, um...
Well, just a little backstory on that. We, I know this board has discussed the idea of that and we've all, we've all, I think, unanimously don't agree with that, that idea. There's, the cleanup issue, um, would fall squarely on the taxpayers. Um, whether it's six million or 10 million or, nobody knows, it's an unknown. Um, I went and met with a hold, the company that owned the property, a couple of years ago, for the sake of requesting from them what they would need to sell the property in terms of from the town. Proposed zoning changes, anything, I wanted to get some information for them from the sake of that. Now, prior to that meeting, we had a conversation about, do we have any interest in buying this property? Even for a dollar, we wouldn't want to buy it, okay? So eminent domain, we're not in the acquire and redevelop land business as a town. It's hard enough to do anything. It's hard enough to build a police station, um, which we're doing, which the, the cost ideally is capped and hopefully doesn't exceed that, cause it's...
It is capped?
Yes.
What's the price, eight million dollars, really?
Um, it's more than that because some money has already been appropriated. I want to say it's like 8.7.
Eight, yep.
Or, I, I don't remember the exact figures, but, but it, it can't exceed that because a town meeting, uh, or I should say the, the debt exclusion was, was a certain amount. I think it was eight million.
Yeah, I mean, it technically could.
So we take six million out of that and, and take down the hospital and two million for the police station, a beautiful piece of property right out front here.
No, no.
We're not in the real estate business.
You can, yeah, I mean, by all, by all means, if, if you want to try to get a petition together, I, I applaud that, I mean, go for it, man. I, I wouldn't support it personally, but I'm, I would never, I would never dissuade you from, from trying to realize that vision. I wouldn't, because that's what town government's all about. We can all participate in this.
You know, we, we have, we, we need money, okay? We need money to run the town, we, for the schools, the police department and the fire department. We talk about overrides, right? And then we talk about, um, cutting town government. What's that mean? You're gonna cut the police department down to one person, the fire department down to one person, a highway department?
I don't think anybody's ever said that in, in one of our meetings.
No, you didn't have to say that. You said that you're gonna, um, um, town cuts.
We did have that once.
No, I don't think so. Sir, I appreciate your insight, but we're gonna move on from this. Does anybody who hasn't spoken have a question? Cause I want to try to wrap this up because we do have more agenda items. Ma'am, sir, you'll go next.
I'm Karen from, um, Apple Road. Derek, now you said you made a deal with Stahl and Char, you want the property and you made a deal with them that you had to clean it up before you sold it.
Say what? Say, say that one more time.
That you have to clean it up before you sell the property?
Yeah, I, I made a commitment to them that I would clean up anything before it's sold. So basically, it'll be a personal guarantee by me that I'll get you to clean it up.
But what, what if you don't do that, you can't do that, what happens with that, that deal?
If I don't clean it up, then I won't sell it. Because, and, and let me go a little further because no, like this gentleman said, no one's gonna buy it and get any finance for it anyways.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, sir.
Hang on.
My question would be in a row after the paneling gentleman.
Okay, sorry. Thanks for raising your hand. Sir, do you have a question?
Yes, uh, Chuck Nichols. Um, as I'm going through this, I'm led to believe that pretty much all of the hazardous waste is just like in the asbestos and stuff that is inside the buildings?
Well, this asbestos, there's lead paint, uh, there possibly might be some TCDs and transformers. Uh, it's, it's a three-page report, so I don't want to say that's all there is.
But it's pretty much all contained in the buildings?
Yeah, out, outside, there, there is a landfill area that we talked about earlier, uh, that's a one point six some acres. Uh, and again, if there's anything else in the ground, we, we're gonna be doing test holes to look for all that.
All right. Anyone else? Derek, do you have anything else?
I just want to thank everybody for coming and again, uh, dmaxy@comcast.net, if you have any concerns, whatever, just toss me an email and I'll try to respond as quick as possible.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Well done.
Thanks, Derek.
Madeline?
Thank you.
I know you took copious notes, but the CD is available in two days.
We need some more, we're so not speaking. We did a gavel.
I don't care if they talk. Why does it matter if they talk? As long as we can hear each other.[1713.83]
Because they can't hear, because cable can't hear.
That's okay. Who cares?
All right. All right, let's go.
Folks, we're going to resume our meeting, so if you're going to talk, if you can do it out in the parking lot, and hopefully it's not raining. And thanks again for coming. I appreciate it. All right, agenda number three is to discuss the 40R application for the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, Amy, Town Council Amy, I'm not even going to try her listening. Is in the process of filing our, or filling out our 40R application. We have her list of questions along with a map showing the two proposed districts highlighted in yellow in our original 40R application from 2006. So, she has some questions here, and I thought we could just go through these and discuss these and get answers to Rita on it. So, when we talk about 40R, we're talking about only the development, or I should say, only the parcels down by the commuter rail station, existing commuter rail station. Who knows how long it will be there? We've had subsequent conversations about the hospital site, and we've decided not to pursue a 40R designation really for the simple fact that it, I think it was Nelson's question on the density, on whether you made, you hit your number with your 40B, could somebody still come in under 40R and do a more dense development? The answer is yes. So, because of that, we don't want to mess with the zoning on the hospital. We're not going to propose anything. So, this is just specific to the 40R that abuts the current 40R down at the train station. So.
I want to, I don't know that we ever changed a vote. We were going to do a 40R for, we'll call it the end of Riverside, the parking lot and the hospital site. Because to answer that question, whether it be 40R or 40B, is you would start the project, and let's say that Nelson's question was, is if you need, if you met your requirement of 50 more 40Bs or 40Rs, okay? Her answer was, you're approving a project. So, if they came to you for an 80 project, 80 units, but you met your criteria at 50, you're approving the project ahead of time. So, you wouldn't even, even under a 40B, say, whoa, stop at the 50, because you're approving an 80 project. And I thought that she led us to believe that you can control your densities better at a 40R.
You can, yes, so the.
So, I don't know.
Right, there's a distinction, and the distinction is you can create specific density for that 40R district.
Yep.
But then, we said, who's going to do that, and how are we going to do that? And I don't even care, because I'm not concerned with a hospital site relative to 40R. If you guys want to put together a subcommittee and propose something at town meeting, have at it. I want nothing to do with it. It's just not my bag. I don't care about it.
Okay, but I don't.
Personally, but if you guys want to jump in.
Right, but it wasn't.
No, no, no.
Right, right. But even in a 40B district, you would not stop the project when you got to the 50 if he gave you an 80 project, housing development, so.
Right, you're stuck with the surplus if it bumps it over on that one particular development.
Yes, and.
Right, but I think that, you know.
And I agree with the rest of it, but we never went further with that discussion.
Well, the other thing too, though, is the 40.
I'm not saying we need to.
Even if there is a 40R overlay, someone can still propose a 40B in there with a density that's different from what the 40R restrictions are, because it's under the 40B regs and not the 40R.
That's right. The 40R, you can have less dense if you so choose to.
Right.
And a 40B is, the town would not want a high-rise building with parking underneath. So, I just was taking a little exception to the 40B versus 40R. You don't stop either project in the middle of it. In the 40B, we would end up with something less desirable, unless we wanted to control the 40R. But as Aaron said, how do you do that?
Right, but I think that the point to be made is that we're not at our 10% limit. So, someone coming in with a 40B can do whatever they want.
Yes, yes.
Right, but my point was that if we were at our 10% limit, and we had a 40R on the hospital site,
They could still do the R.
They could do denser development than if there was no 40R there. And that's why I am okay with there not being 40R on the hospital.
So, my question on this whole thing now is, so when we met with DHCD, what we said is, there's three, there's three projects, I guess we want to call them A, B, and C. We had different color zoning for, you know, if we were going to do a 40R on option parcel A, which was the proposed 40B that we already have in front of us. So, the reason why we said this might be a good idea is because we already know there's a 40B project out there that's coming. So, if we can overlay the 40R anyways, and we can do it under 40R, then at least we could get potential density payments. Again, not counting on the state for anything in any way, shape, or form, but the possibility exists that this project's going in anyways if we can get some money from the state, which again, I understand, as people said, it's not guaranteed money. We know that we fight for all this money every single year. You know, but it's a possibility to get some money for something that's already coming here. So, that was option there, parcel A. Parcel B was looking at like the end of Riverside, where right now, we've had these lots that have been sitting there. Because of existing zoning, nothing's really, or whatever the case may be, existing zoning might be only one factor, but they haven't been developed in, you know, eight years that have been sitting there. That, is it eight? About eight?
Probably, well, Canpro's owned it forever, so.
Okay, so it's been there forever?
Twenty-five, thirty.
I'll give it forever.
Yeah, forever's good.
So that nothing's actually been developed there, whether it happens to be setbacks and things that have been looked at because it's not cost-effective for anybody to develop. They'd need to buy two lots in order to develop one commercial property with parking and things like that. So, it's been sitting there undeveloped. So, the other, the secondary parcel B, we had talked about adding in some 40R language with regard to commercial, because that's not in here. So, it could be an overlay that's different from what our existing overlay is such that we could, you know, take those areas and change some of the setbacks or the, you know, the requirements such that maybe it would be more attractive to commercial development. And then there was C, which was the hospital property that I don't, you know, want to do otherwise anyways. So, I think that that's good in the way of the background, but I think, I just want to clarify that A or the three Xs, is that right here?
Yes.
So, that's, that's, but isn't it, oh, that's the parking lot?
That's the parking lot, yeah.
Parking lot takes up three lots?
Yeah.
It's going to be a great solar field. I can't wait. So, where's the?
No, it isn't.
I know, it's awful. Where's the proposed development? This one, this one, this one?
And I didn't.
Just those three?
Oh, I didn't highlight.
No, one, two, three, four, five. It's six, it's six lots down the inner. Those six.
So, that's all part of the project?
It's not the A, John, I didn't highlight.
Right, the two in the inside, right, right.
Is it just one of the other two that weren't part of it? What was parcel? Oh, so parcel B was just the MBTA station?
Yeah.
So, I think that when we look at the 40R application, because we're putting it in there because the 40B's going in anyways, I guess I wouldn't mind addressing the commercial side of it, but I don't know if that's a moot point.
The only, right.
Since the 40B's going in anyways.
As you pointed out.
Except for this.
Except for the.
Right, right.
Solar field.
As you pointed out, the only thing, the only thing we were attempting to do was to get a unit reimbursement of X dollars, and we didn't want to pass up that opportunity. It doesn't affect the developer from developing what he wanted, but if he put up an 80 unit, we'll call it senior housing, and not that, that was, that was a suggestion, not what may end up being there, we could get reimbursed from the state. What we fight for is the 40S money.
Yeah, but did we determine that if we make this an R, that if a B, and now it's not a B, it's coming in under R, that that doesn't impact our affordable housing inventory, and it leaves us open for more affordable housing in the town?
I don't have that answer.
Because I think that is the key.
We didn't ask that.
You mean if it's a R, it doesn't count?
Right, doesn't count for affordable housing inventory.
Why?
Because I don't think it has to under R. It's density, it's not affordability criteria.
We counted it already under the I district. We did, we did, we did Kensington Court like that.
Affordable inventory?
Yeah, we did Kensington Court like that, yes, yes.
So, that's specific to our R district.
Yes, yes, so it does count.
All right.
All right, so now that we've clarified that.
Yes.
These questions are all relative to this, the proposed new 40R addition, whether it should be, what the density should be. And I think we need to know what the proposed density is before we can even have this conversation, honestly.
If I may.
Yep.
That was the question that Amy had when I met with her the other day.
Right, no, that's what I'm reading, yeah.
Right, and we could, I gave you a copy of our original application for the density, but I think you do want to wait. She did contact Bob's attorney. But maybe you could answer the other questions for her, and then once you hear back from Attorney Shaughnessy or Shaughnessy, decide on which density you want to go with.
Right, well, we need to know what the proposed density is before we can answer the first question, which is relative to density. More dense, less dense?
Right, right.
Bob Polito's project.
But I believe, I believe that the only one that you would get reimbursed for on a unit basis would be that lodge of hop and house. So, that's the only thing. The others, whether they're duplexes or whatever, they're not going to meet anyone's density requirements. But that's just a point. So, we can wait till Amy gets some information from Bob's attorney, if you'd like.
Well, I think the first question, you could answer. I think you'd want the MBTA to be a separate, do two separate districts, not just expand it into one and then have mixed use on the MBTA station site.
I mean, I think that, I don't know what we should be doing about that MBTA site now. I mean, since we met with DHCD, 72 different things have come our way about that lot, three lots. You know, I don't know what, I don't want to make a decision on something like that without knowing, not that we know any.
So, I don't mind dealing with just Riverside and Commercial Drive.
Yeah.
I don't mind that. So, let's just deal with that development.
Unless we can create a new 40R that specifically bans solar farms.
There you go, there you go.
All right, so, yeah, let's, I say we, we wait and we, we put this on a subsequent agenda when we get the information from the density, on what the proposed density is.
The, well, the bill is here, Mr. Chair. Where do you stand on your application for 40B, Bob, if you know?
I was hoping it was going in this weekend, now they wanted Braden, but I'm still hoping to have it.
You see, if he submits his before we do the I, and we can't do the I before a town meeting, we're not going to do it. So, I think we should be, it was kind of a lost- ditch effort on our part, so I don't know that we're going to do any of the R proposals. And it's not, whether he puts it in a week or a month, we have to go to town meeting. It's a long process. So, I don't know that we should do anything, Mr. Chair. We're, we can get the densities off of Bob's attorney, but.
Well, when does it stop? When do we miss the opportunity to do the 40R?
I didn't know you did, because I guess they were going to pass a law, but they never passed it yet.
Right, they had mentioned that it was with the new regulations that were coming out for mass housing.
Let's continue then.
I mean, we might, we could keep pushing it just along, just to see what happens with it.
Yeah, I remember there was a deadline, but I don't remember what triggered it.
I didn't think it was justified with the application.
I didn't think it was the application. I thought it was.
Approval, their approval.
Yeah, the issuance of the permit is the triggering event to forestall our ability to pursue a 40R.
Then, then I don't, right.
We might as well keep.
Right, so I don't mind if we do the density as he's proposed it, and have Amy file the paperwork ASAP.
Well, and that is what did happen, right, with the Kensington Court project, right? It was submitted afterwards, after the 40B went in. I don't know the timing of the comprehensive permit when it was issued versus when they did shift it over to a 40R.
He withdrew, was that 40B application?
Right, right, but they said they're going to change, as you said, they're going to change that process. But let's continue. Let's do the densities that he's proposed, and let's try to forge ahead.
Do you want to, do you want to answer the other?
What are the other?
No, we'll just table it.
Okay.
Table, that's fine.
Or do whatever you want to do with it. All right. Number six, discuss clarification of vote of October 11th, 2017, regarding letter of non-opposition for Nature's Remedy. David Miller of Nature's Remedy has requested that the board revise their letter of non-opposition that was issued to include the following language. To operate a registered marijuana dispensary, RMD, and also an adult-use marijuana establishment, contingent upon Nature's Remedy obtaining a state-issued license to both sell and cultivate adult-use marijuana and marijuana-related products. We have an attached letter from David. Nate Darling has requested that we send a letter to Town Council due to the zoning reference, as he could not confirm whether this was an allowed use under our current zoning. And Greg Corbo is going to check into that. Did we hear that from Greg?
Yes, I gave him.
Oh, do I have it? Oh, I didn't even look at that.
He didn't come to us with his attorney, right?
This was the, this was the, he came to us.
I gave it to you. Oh, you didn't put it in your agenda?
No, I didn't give it.
No, it's right here. You can read it. It pretty much says, there's no such thing. Because here, try to, like, that's why, like, the attorney did.
Right, right.
He's saying it's premature.
Yeah, the laws don't come into effect until April 1st.
Okay, all right, so.
There's no issued licenses.
So, on the one hand, the concern is, is that if you don't zone for it, it could arguably go anywhere. Right, and that's the concern. You don't zone for it, it could arguably go anywhere, right? Greg is saying, well, there's no regulation, or there's no, there's no.
There's no case law relative to.
Mechanism in which there's any enforcement, there's no ability to even do this. I want to, so that's one piece of it. The other piece is that when Nature's Remedy came in front of us, they at no time, in my recollection, asked for an adult-use marijuana establishment. I mean, that's, what is that, like a bar where people sit around?
Right, yeah.
Right, that's a huge flag compared to.
That is, that is a actual town-wide.
Right.
Well, you can have that. You have to have a town-wide vote that approves for you to have on-premise consumption of marijuana.
Right.
I don't know anyone who's ever going to do that.
And that, that would be a long, that would be a long shot with me.
Right, no, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't do that one.
It's one thing to have people purchase and consume marijuana in the privacy of their own home, or if they have a medical need for it, but this was never brought up during that meeting. And that's why I wanted to revisit this at this meeting, because he's, he kind of came in and said, oh, no, no, you guys did it, just change the letter, like, tried to trick the town hall into giving him a revised letter that allowed this, which obviously.
Allowed something that doesn't exist in the law right now.
Well, still, but I mean, who knows what is.
I just hope that they switch over to like a for-profit. Well, they're not coming through anyways. I checked their sighting profile.
But, but he, but he, he added the word adult use, which I believe ends up being a smoke shop, say. But the real question is, is the procedure for recreational? Because we, as a board, have supported the medical, obviously. But the recreational, we have also said, that's where two-thirds of the business is going to come from. Now, Greg Corbo takes the word procedure for recreational or adult use. There's no wording for recreational, but we have supported at our meetings the support for recreational sale. So, if someone asked us for a rec, for a non-opposition for two things, one a medical and one for recreational, not adult use, would we give that a letter?
It doesn't exist, so, yet.
Go ahead, I agree.
So, I think the thing is, right now, because DPH is going to fold into DOR, under which the program's going to be, not DOR, the.
Take Kerry's family.
Federal government, a lot of my town, that's.
Right, but it's, but it's statewide, it's like, so, the, it's, is it DOA? Doesn't matter. It's the treasurer's office. So, she's running the recreational program.
Deb Goldberg.
Yeah, DPH is running the medical program. The plan is the Cannabis Control Commission's putting the two together. The regulations should be coming out, and they're, they're working on them all right now. But there's no application allowed until April 1st, 2018. That's when they'll start accepting applications only from experienced cultivators, which are medical ones that are either through the process or already have been selling. So, there's going to be supposedly 75 licenses issued then. What we have to be cognizant of is a lot of towns put a moratorium on it because they didn't know what it was going to look like. I think the Cannabis Control Commission is certainly listening to what the cities and towns are saying with regard to, you can't spring this on us before our town meeting, because we won't have time to put on the warrant if all of a sudden that you could do recreational zone anywhere that a business is authorized to be, which is what it originally was. But what they're trying to do is tie it into the medical license. So, there's no way that we could even ever issue someone a recreational license who's not a medical license holder right now. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be a medical license holder in a different city or town. But we kind of have to watch this and just make. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be a medical license holder in a different city or town, but we kind of have to watch this and just make sure that we're following it with the advice of town council. To make sure that when we get to the spring town meeting, we likely will have some language related to either the, you know, one of the points that was brought up is the, the fact that we have, the not-for-profit component is in our definition in zoning as a registered marijuana dispensary, which most cities and towns have. Now, you don't have to be a nonprofit effective January first. So those are the things that we need to be looking at from a zoning perspective, is that, you know, it's coming here anyways, you know, or if it's going to be not coming here, it's going next door. So, you know, we just need to be on top of what the rules are, are doing so we can have something ready for the spring town meeting.
But what I don't want to do is, the people that have come before us, we've said we would support both recreational sales and medical. And granted, they haven't finalized the, the law and the wording of the recreational. But having said that, we've encouraged people to do recreational that have come before us. So now, where are we on supporting recreational? I want to make sure we're not flip-flopping on, on this.
Sure, no, because they get sucked into one.
Oh, no, no, my. My concern.
Yeah, oh, I think it's going to be in the same area. I think so.
That's the best argument we're doing. What we've said multiple times is, we don't want to have, you know, a recreational one over here, and one over there, and one over there, and one over there. We decided, you know, two was reasonable in terms of, you know, a medical establishment coming in, it would be medical first. I think likely we're only going to get one anyways. But that one would be the one that would also then offer the recreational component.
So my concern isn't, isn't, my concern with this particular applicant, there's two aspects to it. The first is, I don't like the way that he tried to subvert the board for the sake of getting a revised letter. I think that that was sneaky and that's, that's just not cool. The second issue is, is there a distinction between an adult-use marijuana establishment and a recreational marijuana sales facility?
Yes.
Is there, is that, is that a definition of some kind that we're not aware of?
Yeah, I think it's heading.
I know, and I, I agree with.
No, it would become a smoke shop.
Right.
No, it, right.
No, but is it more than a smoke shop? I mean, a smoke shop is what, where they, they sell paraphernalia and the drug, but you can't smoke it?
No, 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 no.
Or is it, there's couches and people are, right? It's like a bar, right?
Exactly, 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 exactly. But we don't know that definition.
No, that exists.
We know where it's going.
That exists under the laws that was written, citizen's petition.
Right, right.
But the only way to do it was through a town-wide referendum vote of you saying, yes, I want to have like a cafe for marijuana.
Right, but, but, see, there's a distinction in the language that they've chosen. They're not choosing the typical language we see.
It's just an RMD, yep.
So even if we don't have the ability to grant this, I don't want to grant, I don't want to issue this letter. I don't want to issue this letter from the, the way that they went about trying to get it revised, somewhat punitive, but I don't want to issue it because I don't agree with the wording on it.
I, that's why I asked, like, he didn't come with his attorney, this didn't come from the attorney. There's so many people that I, you know, you interact with in this space that are so not, like, they think that's fine, and they're going to go and take their plants that they have in their basement and like put them in a, you know, coffee shop and start selling it, so.
I, I think, I think we all agree that we would not approve at this point in time, or maybe in the future, the adult use. But my only question is, is would we give a letter of supporting recreational, a non, a non-opposition for recreational?
For the cultivation and sale of recreational?
Yes.
I would.
No, no, but that doesn't exist yet.
No, I know that, I know that, I know, I know.
Because what's happening is that, under the existing laws, we have to issue this letter of non-opposition.
I know.
Whether or not that's going to exist with recreational under the Cannabis Control Commission, nobody knows.
Right, we don't know that, right.
Because we certainly have indicated to the people that have come before us that we, we support the recreational sale.
Right, because one goes with the other as they merge together, but nobody knows how that's going to happen.
Right, no, I get that, I get that.
Because we don't want a medical and a recreational. If we're going to have one, we want to work with the, the best business people we define, which I think we have, of the ones who.
Right, but these guys, right, these, these, these people are, were significant operators who seemed to be forging ahead.
They probably lost their funding.
Frank, do you have a question?
Thanks, Derek. Chris Drys falling out of his chair here. I've got relatives in Colorado. And let me tell you, this is a freight train that's coming down the drives in Massachusetts that no one is going to be able to stop. The revenue dollars are just way too big. Quick question, do we as a town have the right to tax the sale of?
Yes, so, so how it works is we, we can enter into a host agreement with a facility. We can get three percent of gross sales for medical, three percent of gross sales for recreational, and a three percent tax on the recreational. So there's a six percent recreational component and a three percent for the medical.
On the gross sales.
On the gross sales. There's also a negotiation for, under certain, or we've talked with people about the idea of getting, for the cultivation piece, because some folks might start a cultivation project or a process in a building and sell it in other towns, so you lose out on the revenue for that. That you would get with, with a relationship like that, you might get a flat fee of, say, a hundred grand a year out of that operation for the, for the ability to cultivate.
But all these things too, we have to keep watching because what they've just come out with also is to say that you have to actually prove that the money you're receiving in this host agreement is going to mitigate the impact on your community of having this in your community. So there's some reporting that needs to be done by the town that, you know, we can inflate figures, I'm sure.
No, we can't. Come on, what are you videotaping right now, says the accountant?
No, but it's, it's, all of this stuff is just so up in the air that we don't know where it's going, but the intent seems to be moving towards this being mitigation money, not being, which to me doesn't necessarily make any sense because it is, it's a business that you're operating within your town, so that's another piece that's kind of being debated right now. Is, you know, does this money have to come in and be an offset to expenses that you're incurring by having it here?
Okay, so there's some offsets. And, and the other thing that, personal opinion here, is the, the way the medical side of it is dispensed. I mean, here's CBS up here, guess what's going to happen here? You know, it's not going to be just local people.
Right, but do you, do you.
No, somebody will.
I don't know if you're familiar with the security requirements too, that they require for the medical establishments for marijuana right now too. It's done by medical card, you know, only for certain conditions. And then there are very strict requirements that the state has put out there for whether you can even get in. You need to have your card before you're let into the ante room, before you're let into the next room, before, so there's a lot of control over the medical side. Clearly, once they go recreational, nobody knows what that's going to look like, unfortunately. But the state, what, what's been said is about Massachusetts is the fact that because they have very strict liquor laws, that likely this will mirror some of those liquor law-type strict restrictions on people and usage and where things can go. So again, we're, we're just kind of watching it all.
Oh, Dick?
Not to regress too far, but Nate asked a zoning question, and I didn't really get closure on what the issue there was and how you were going to handle the answer.
There's two pieces to the zoning issue. The, the first is, there's language that specifies it being a not-for-profit entity. Well, we'll have to deal with that because they've changed that on the state level to let these companies be for-profit. So we'll have to do a housekeeping change to our zone, existing zoning bylaw to address that. The second piece is that our bylaw does not address the recreational side of, of the sale or cultivation. So the question is, or I should say that solution to that is to also put forward a zoning bylaw that then designates a specific area, the same that, where we have the current medical. The fear is, is that like adult use, or I should say adult entertainment, if you don't zone for it, it can go anywhere. So that's, those are the two zoning issues we have to straighten out.
But, but to clarify, it sounds like depending on how the law comes out, there will be a warrant to address proper zoning for what's been proposed with regard to your letter of non-opposition. In other words, your non-opposition assumes that their proposal conforms with the state law, and you would then have to go back to town meeting to get the zoning to match that. And if it didn't get approved, I presume the facility would not be licensed to go in there. Is that correct?
Maybe, we don't know, because again, there's no case law to determine how this would shake out.
It, it, yeah, it probably wouldn't go that way. The state will probably say if you have a medical, it can also be a recreational, a separate door, because they want, they want their three percent on one and six percent on another. But, right, we're, we're not sure, but I don't think, we don't want to have multiple, a, a medical here and down the street a recreational. We don't mind if they're combined. If the zoning doesn't conform to it, I'm not so sure the state won't write a law that kind of overrides it. You may not have to go for it. They might write the law that allows it, that's all.
I don't understand the difference between recreational and adult use.
Well, that was my question, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know why this person, this applicant chose to use adult-use marijuana establishment.
It's the same thing, like, it's the establishment piece, I think that you have the problem.
I'm not going to make that assumption. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not willing to provide this letter.
I actually think that recreational is not the proper language. I think the proper language is adult use, but it's the establishment piece that makes it, who the heck knows what it is.
This is, this is, the process by which this was done, and you, you dealt with the person, correct? I mean, am I, am I mischaracterizing the interaction when, when I say that it was somewhat underhanded?
Like a, like a bully?
All right.
He was like trying to bully me to write, rewrite the letter.
He wasn't really laid back.
Without the selectmen officially voting the wording in the letter.
It'd be laid back.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Didn't work.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to support this. I don't want, I want to get an answer as to what adult-use marijuana establishment means. I, I would even go so far as to, to rescind the existing letter of non-opposition.
I just wouldn't answer.
Right.
Or maybe we just don't answer them.
Right.
I don't think he's going to find me anyway.
Mr. Chair, if we, the letter that I did write them, I wasn't at the meeting when you, you voted on this.
Yep.
So I sent them a letter that said that it's a registered marijuana dispensary cultivation facility. If we are going to stick with the letter, I, I would suggest that we insert the word medical in there to make it clear to them.
It's in our definition of what an RMD is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So we only are authorized to issue one for an RMD, which is in our zoning bylaws under definition.
Right.
Which is a nonprofit medical.
Hmm, isn't even.
Sir?
The adult use, yeah, right, the adult use establishment.
Were we comfortable proposing the zoning to the medical dispensary?
The medical currently exists in industrial, is it just industrial?
Yes.
So that would be the industrial park and a portion of land off of forty-four, up like across from Muckey's Liquor Store. I think that's pretty much it, right? Or industrial B?
Crooked Lane.
Crooked Lane?
Yeah.
Crooked Lane is, yeah. Where the, the giant.
Oh, sure, yeah, right, yeah. No more squash for norm, right? Sir?
Is there a proper zone that's required for these from like a school?
Yeah, it's five hundred feet.
It's five hundred? Would you guys consider making it a thousand or?
Yeah, it's state law.
And there are, I, I measured even preschool private ones, and none of them are, whether it be.
There aren't, or a thousand?
No.
In Massachusetts.
Well, right, but we, we don't have any in, in that area. We have some preschool private facilities, and I don't know if that's defined as a school versus a public school that we know where they are. Public schools aren't anywhere near any of these industrial areas. My only, and I, and I measured the other ones. They're, they're three times further than the state law currently says, and if you went from five hundred to a thousand feet, it still doesn't make any difference.
And then my one other question was, you had said that the person was fully liked, and you said that that was the best person that you guys.
No, no, it's a different one. We've had like five or six people in front of us, so that was not one of, that wasn't the one that is actually purchasing property next week.
Did you go to the letter of non-opposition to the person that was, that she said was fully liked, right?
Correct, and he wanted it to be revised, and that's why we're talking about it, because we, she can't revise a letter based on a conversation that never took place with us. I mean, we had a meeting and she wrote the letter based on our decision. She said, no, 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 I want it done a different way. So she said, should I add it to an agenda? I said, absolutely, we need to talk about this as a group, we can't.
This is an indication of maybe what's to come, that that's how the person's behaving now.
I don't necessarily want to make that assumption, but bear in mind, I am the one who said I'm okay rescinding it, I'm okay with the punitive aspect to my decision. And I want further language relative to exactly what adult-use marijuana establishment means. But I really like Metz's suggestion of just doing nothing.
Mm-hmm, no, that's fine.
I mean, the thing too with this is that it has to go through site plan review also. So it's, even if we issue a letter of non-opposition and then they come through, it's supposed to go through the planning board and site plan review. So it doesn't necessarily mean that they're moving forward on it, but even reviewing what's been submitted to the DPH, to this company, they're not even near, like, we, we're not even remotely close on the signing profile. They have two other locations that they're kind of pursuing that they have gotten like a go-ahead on too. So I don't even know if three-ten is still available, you know, for, um, three-ten, ten of Welch, yeah, so.
Don't know.
For red?
They all go back and forth, they all have a bright idea of, of trying to get in a business that's a billion-dollar business until they find out it has to be private money and not bank money, and that's where the problem starts.
Can you just ask two, on behalf of the board, help when the, like cigarettes, right, you go to South and buy it, and you can't light one up in South, okay? The vape shops got a waiver from the state that you can sample in the vape shops if we make them put all the filters and fans and all the other kind of stuff. You know, that's bad enough, but they're going to, if the, if the use part of that is so they could sample and sit around sampling all day in a place, that would have a whole different meaning of just being able to sell us.
We, we would certainly not support a, I don't think, a smoke shop within a facility. But trust me, they're going to go in their car and light up their joint. They're not going to wait till they get out of the bounds of Lakeville. But we, we don't want them in, in that facility having a dozen couches sitting around smoking drugs. I don't.
Right, but that's a great point, because there's, there's even the, the oil pens, so you can vape marijuana oil. So this is going to be ridiculous once this starts happening.
Yeah, because we have to read that anything that emits any type of smoke is treated like a cigarette in town, because people are going into the golf courses and stuff and lighting those up and saying, this isn't tobacco, you can't stop it. So, you know, speaking of equality, right, it said you can treat anything that emits smoke.
No, that's a great point, and we're going to definitely have to have some joint meetings with you guys, no pun intended.
It's like there's a pun everywhere.
That's the adult-use place.
For the sake of discussing how we want to try to have a comprehensive review or oversight on all of this activity, because this is, there's been nothing like this, this is.
Right, and, and again, we don't know what it's looking like because they meet every week, and it's, you know, other stuff is being discussed. There's a forum really where you can kind of submit questions, but we'll see where it goes.
Just so it doesn't have to be next to a bakery, we're good.
Yeah, sir, did, sorry, Chris, hang on, did you have a question?
It was my understanding that there already is one facility approved on Kenneth Wolf's Drive.
We have a letter of non-opposition for one.
Right, so we've issued a few letters of non-opposition to different companies that have all wanted to locate in one building or another on Kenneth Wolf's Drive. There's, there's one in particular that is actually purchasing a building in there. They seem to be well-funded and polished, competent professionals that are moving forward. They seem to be well-funded and polished, competent professionals that are moving forward. So, yeah, there, there's one that, that seems like it's rising above the rest to, to be a clear indication that they'll actually someday succeed or open, I should say.
Is there some mechanism that, you know, to rescind the license from them? If, you know, like say traffic is upgraded?
Well, what we need to do is, is enter into a host agreement with them. So that's basically like a contract that says, you know, we're gonna receive a certain amount of money. But you can discuss all of that stuff as part of that negotiation. We haven't gotten to that stage yet, but that's, that's the next step we need to take.
Okay. Now, are the abutters going to be involved with that as well?
What do you mean?
The abutters to that property?
In what regard?
You said something about they have to go through a site plan review and such?
Sure, yeah, well, that, that, of course, but, but abutters are always notified from the planning board relative to a, a site plan review. They'd have an opportunity to be a part of that, that process and, and voice concerns about any potential impact on the area.
But the abutters are, currently are all industrial businesses.
Yes, I'm, I'm in that industrial park.
Yeah, yeah.
And believe me, there is traffic now, and to have a retail facility in that, it's gonna be a hell of a lot worse.
But they're also, isn't that the first building?
The first, the, the, there's two buildings, basically, you have to, there, there's no new buildings going up in there other than the, the Cape Cod copper guys. So these people generally are either gonna buy an existing building or they're gonna sublease from someone that has a substantial building there. That's what they're gonna do. And, and the, the notification of the abutters would be coming through the planning board and, and that type of thing.
Yeah, is there a special permit component too?
Yeah, it's a special permit through the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's all, everything's through the planning board?
All inclusive.
Yep, okay.
I just have one more question. Are any of those buildings that could potentially be purchased and used for this, are those anywhere near that private preschool that you mentioned?
They're, they're three, I, I drove it and measured the distance. They're probably four times further than the state law currently says. No, they're not, they're not.
And what's the town's, I guess, idea on how much you're willing to let it as far as like companies or buildings or such? Do you have a maximum that you're going to allow or?
I mean, we, yeah, we had talked generally about two that we were willing to kind of entertain. I think at this point, it's like we're going to be one, because everybody comes with a great idea. No, we just want, we want the best, honestly. You know, as we kind of screen through them, because we're gonna have someone that we need to partner with. You know, especially with this industry, we want to make sure that we know who we're dealing with, that we're getting the most revenue, we're getting the most mitigation, we're getting the most community support. Because, you know, this, this guy who's buying the building next week, he, you know, they've pledged community support. They gave us a copy of a sample host agreement, you know, it's included in there as well. So as we negotiate the host agreement, we're looking for that. I think the biggest thing for us is that this is coming, and the other towns around us haven't banned it. So it's going to be in Lakeville, no matter what. Whether it happens to be trickling in because it's on our borders or whether we're able to have some mitigation that comes from the revenue that we can get from one of the existing facilities, we're more likely to want to have one good one that's coming in that we can handle. We have said, you know, two would be, I think, our max. So we're gonna be watching zoning and what's happening with zoning at the state level, what we can do to make sure that we can minimize that. We certainly don't want six of them in town, we don't want seven of them in town, we don't want them all over the place.
Are these companies established in a way that you would be able to say, you know, that they are gonna be a partner? This is all so new, it's all.
It's, it's all about financial backing, it's about who their attorneys are, it's about what you can glean from them. You know, and, and there's some requirements in the host agreement that they have to fulfill their duties as well. So we, we don't know if it's going to turn into a local licensing authority, like with the liquor licenses that we have, there's been talk of that. But there's also talk of keeping it at the state level. So we just don't know what control we're gonna be able to have over it.
Right, and there's also talk, or there was, and maybe this has changed, if it, it's tied to the amount of liquor licenses you have.
Yeah, that was part of the original.
X number of liquor licenses, you have to issue X number of.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, so.
It's package store licenses, that's how it came through in the citizens petition, which is what then got changed a little bit at the state level, but it's still undergoing some changes, that it was going to be that if you had issued 10 package store licenses, that you had to have two in the town. Or, or you couldn't deny two, if it's.
The peo- the people will be, we can't test their honesty, if you will, but they have to have deep pockets. They've gotta have three to six million dollars of, of cold hard cash or someone backing them, because the banks don't do it. So it's a lot of money, it's not you or I going down, putting a hundred plants in a place. It's millions of dollars of business. And that's why most of the people just disappear before they purchase buildings or anything, because it's substantial.
Chris?
Chris, Brad Hall wrote, the kind of answer of, or ask a question, kind of like what you're like, right?
Yeah.
And what you talked about, I believe was under the medical guidelines right now to become a grower or establish those places, you have to have a state license to begin with. So and to go back to whether, you know, we have maybe some unsavory characters moving into town, you can't, not just anyone can just move.
Right.
You have that, it's a state.
That's, that's a great point, and also another aspect to it is, is like, there's only, there's only one bank that will do business with marijuana people. And to even get a bank account, what is it, five grand a year?
Uh, no.
The cost?
No, it's, it's $5,000 a month to have an armored car come to your place to pick up your money, 'cause it's all cash.
So that's 60 grand a year just to have the bank account? But that bank does an exhaustive search, background search on, on the individuals they're doing business with.
Very selective.
There's a lot of mechanisms in place at different levels to, to kind of give you an understanding of who you're dealing with just by saying, well, are you dealing with, what is it, Century?
It's Century Bank, yeah.
You're dealing with Century Bank, if they say, yeah, we just had a meeting with them and they approved our application, that holds a lot more weight than the person who says, who's Century Bank?
Right.
You know, and we've seen that, so.
It also requires a minimum, you know, minimum investment in the bank of $500,000. You know, you have to prove that, and that's not nearly enough to do anything, honestly, in this industry. But you have to prove that on the application that, that you submit initially to the state. State collects your license fees whether or not you get a license or not. So, you know, there's the trust fund that's been set up by the state to deal with the application fees, and they're pretty substantial.
What I've heard, that most banks won't touch it because, that's because they have to get sick.
It's money laundering issues.
The federal government, it's not legal, federal, so they don't want to touch it because they don't want federal government coming after that as being a business for illegal operations.
Right.
So there's a lot of hurdles you gotta jump over.
Is, is there a retail restriction or industrial?
There was, but it expired.
For our big property?
Um, I believe so, is that correct, Rita?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Expired.
Thirty years.
And how, could that be reinstated? How did that, your lease property expire?
I don't know. I, I, well, there was a timeframe on it. It was a covenant or a, most likely a land use covenant that was part of the original Lakeville.
LDC, Lakeville Development Corp.
We got us the one building.
Gone.
Yes, yeah, it was just specific to the, the industrial park for a fixed term of time. I don't know as if you could, the town doesn't own that land anymore. So to come up with a, a way to enact a covenant, you really have to get buy-in from, from a majority of landowners within the area. I mean, that's a good question for a land use attorney. I think I'd know the answer, but I don't.
But couldn't that be done with zoning, because it is industrial, it is not for retail?
We put that, that definition of the RMD, registered manu- uh, manuf- marijuana dispensary in the industrial zone. So it's in there, I guess, under zoning.
Right, you could, you could, I, I suppose, if you change your zoning.
But that, wouldn't that catch 22, because then you wouldn't have any area to sell it to, so then they can put it anywhere?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's a very, I can't answer that question just sitting here without researching it some, but you're right, I mean, that's a great point. If you restrict one allowed use under state law through zoning, you've effectively shut off any place for it to locate, right? Because you're only allowing one aspect of the business to exist when the state allows cultivation and sale. You know what I mean? So you, I mean, again, that would shake out through case law, but my guess is that what Bob's saying would probably hold true. A court would say, you've effectively disallowed this organization or this company to utilize the law that allows them to have both aspects of their business, so you've essentially shut them down or forestalled their ability to see the, the fruits of that, that business. And that zoning would probably be overly restrictive.
So for Crooked Lane?
Yeah, except for right the north side of Crooked Lane or whatever it is. All right, listen, we've, we've talked this one to death. I really appreciate the public input, though. This is exciting to actually have people in the audience. We normally just talk amongst each other.
We had a skeleton for a while, and we just crop into different things because no one shows up.
Yeah, it was a great conversation, I appreciate everybody's input.
They don't have to leave yet either.
But I'm just, I'm gonna just suggest we take no action on this, and if you could tell them that we had a lengthy conversation and it was just unclear as to what that meant, the, the, you know, and.
What a terrible letter.
What is it?
Yeah.
All right, agenda item number seven is to discuss the solar canopy project at the commuter rail station. The Board of Selectmen sent a letter to the Honorable Charles Baker. Charles Baker is our governor. We've actually, Charlie Baker was in Lakeville for a wedding within the last year, and he said, it was at St. Arthur's and Mary, what a great spot, beautiful spot, it overlooks this wonderful lake. It was so picturesque, I really loved it. And yet, he's willing to have that conversation at a political fundraiser, not his. But yet, he did not even respond to our letter. He had a very detailed letter as to our opposition, our concern with the solar canopy project. Basically, a power station, we're gonna turn a parking lot into a power station in the middle of a residential district, and we're very concerned about the impact of that. And this is the letter we got back. Dear Lakeville Board of Selectmen, on behalf of Governor Charlie Baker, thank you for your recent correspondence regarding your concerns on the MBTA's Middleborough-Lakeville commuter rail station proposal. I have forwarded your concerns onto the Department of Transportation. Now, the Department of Transportation, for those of you who don't know, were the people that came in and told us, oh, no, no, we're not closing the Lakeville, the, the Lakeville station. We're, we're just gonna use it for other purposes, for the Cape Cod Flyer and, and whatnot, and we, we've never abandoned it. And then two weeks later, when we were at the Middleborough meeting about the proposed station, the same exact people told us that they're closing it. It was awesome.
And we're shocked when we said, that's the first we've heard of that.
So that's the Department of Transportation folks that they've passed our concerns on to.
Which we copied in the letter anyway.
Right. Again, thank you for contacting Governor Baker's office. And please feel free to contact our office in the future with any questions or concerns you might, may have regarding other matters. And we don't want to hear about this one again. Sincerely, Constituent Services Aid, Office of Governor Charlie Baker. No name, no name and no signature. We don't even know who this person is.
Do you think that we can get City of Boston Letterhead and stick our letter on and send it to them and see what happens?
So needless to say, this is very, I'm making light of it, but this is, this is offensive. It's such a bad response to a, a really well-drafted letter that we, that Nate took a stab at, Tracy, me, and Greg Carbo, our town council, we all contributed to this letter. It was, it was a really well-drafted, thoughtful letter of legitimate concerns that, that we have relative to putting a power station in the middle of a residential area. And this is what we got back. So I think we need to strategize what our next step is. We have discussed with Nate the idea of a cease and desist. If they do start construction, which obviously we want to follow through with, which, you know, we, they, we assume they're just going to ignore it. So we have to, we have to decide what our next, that's, that's really not our best strategy. I don't know what our best strategy is, I'm, I'm kind of like.
I mean, Pacheco wants us all to join hands and sue the MBTA. I, I think that's a little like.
Right, I, I, I went on, I went on record.
Let's, let's call Karen Polito and then, but I say, send this letter with a letter that says, we are offended by this letter, please respond, and we'll see if we get a different.
I think we want to send this to CAKO and we want to send it to Mike Roderick.
No, right, CAKO and Mike Roderick, but I would say.
Send it to Jay Ash.
Write it to, write it to Karen Polito and tell her that we're insulted by a, 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 a form, a form response with, we know, no action. So I think we need to change our attack to CAKO into Mike Roderick's. Mike, not that CAKO wasn't, but Mike Roderick was always of the opinion, if you guys don't want it, you're not gonna get it. And, and that was words he said exactly to me. So I think an immediate letter to Karen Polito and Carver and Copy and obviously CAKO and Mike, but I want to FedEx these things to all parts. I don't want to put them in the mail, don't want to do that. But we can.
Email it.
Well, no, well, email, no, you can't email it to Charlie Baker either. He, he doesn't have one, you gotta send it, you gotta get a form to get it, and it goes in this plot that gets stirred up and you'll never get an answer either. So there is no, there is no Charlie Baker one. So, so the, the update was, was a little bit different before the receipt of the letter. Jackie Crowley from Middleborough, Middleborough Gas and Electric, she's the general manager, called and said certainly that Navitas, the solar people are fast-tracking the installation of the solar panels. She talked to me a couple of days ago and said, John, they wanna start digging because they have to create the facility by March 31st. They don't have to have it hooked up and running, but all of the construction, less the hookup, has to be done by March 31st. So she just forewarned me that they're bugging her to finish her study as to how to hook it up electrically to, to the power grid. And the other thing she had said to me was that the amount of money that they had originally offered, which was less than $4,000. Now, so one's negotiating a price and we don't want it. So I'm, I'm saying, you know, what if you negotiate a half a million dollar price? Well, it doesn't happen, but even at that, we still don't want it there. But her idea is that for the size of the grid, other people are getting $20,000. So if they, if they're gonna do it, and I'm not proposing they do, if they're gonna do it, she said we should get, I believe it's $15,000 a megawatt, that's one and a half megawatts, I think. I'd have to go back and get the math right, but she had given me a, a number greater than $20,000, not 4,000, and not a number based on the assessors.
Do you know when she first was contacted about this project? Do we have a timeline at all? Because I know that, that one of the big issues that we had was the fact that we're nowhere on the original RFP, that Lakeville was never a thought of ever being a solar canopy farm until all of a sudden South Coast Rail decided that they were going. of ever being a solar canopy farm until all of a sudden South Coast Rail decided that they were going to move the station.
I don't think it was a long, was not a long time ago. I'm, I'm not answering that question, but it was not a long time ago. They had just given her an eighteen thousand dollar check, which is the money that they pay of how to hook it up to the grid. So, uh, Middleboro Gas Electric hires a consultant, figures out how to hook up the solar panels to the grid. And they gave them that probably six weeks ago, my guess, and they have another couple of weeks. So it's an eight to twelve week project to figure that out. She was somewhat, not somewhat taken back, she was extremely taken back that they're going to abandon the parking lot after all this work is done. She said, this is just, just crazy. But her message really was just the two phases. One, the amount of money that they offered is ridiculously low. And they're fast-tracking it because they know they have to do it by March thirty-first. So she was forewarning me on that. And after getting the, the ridiculous letter from the governor's office, I think your, your strategy would be to go to Polito, Carbon Copy and CAKO and, and Mike and say, you've got to tell us who we can meet with.
Now.
Now.
Right.
And we should, and I think we've agreed that we're going to do the cease and desist. You're gonna get, well, you won't even get this form letter from the Department of Transportation, MBTA. You won't ever get any letter from them, so.
And then they'll write you a letter. Two weeks later, it'll be different.
Oh, I didn't know we were going to abandon it, but go ahead.
There is, but then there's the question of negative returns, you know, the, the cost to, to. You would hold that in reserve.
To litigate versus.
Right now, you're asking them to talk to you, basically.
Right.
Right. Well, that, that would be the cease and desist. If the cease and desist is ignored, we could go for an injunction. But what we've learned from town council is that that would probably be ineffective because of the way that the state has sovereignty over local zoning. Um, you know, we could borrow a, a page from the Alan Fröll book and strap ourselves to the side of the train tracks or whatever he was planning on doing with, if they were going to move the.
I think we should just hide.
I, I moved to have Aaron do that himself. I'm not doing it.
I'm not that much of a zealot.
All right, I, I second that motion.
I do too. I moved the motion.
What's unfortunate about. Because she's the one that said it. I mean, it's absolutely asinine, the, this stuff that, that they come up with. And these people are paid to do this. Now, the consultants were, were, or actually the, the project managers were just completely like shucking and jiving the whole time. And they would say whatever they thought we wanted to hear. They talked as if everything was an absolute. It was all a done deal. And it was just based on ridership projections they don't even have yet. So how can you say there's a need when you don't even know how many people are even projected to ride it? It would be, it was, it's like they have the money, they can't spend it fast enough.
Right. And with the solar piece, they accused us of, you know, aren't you part of the green communities? You don't want solar in your town?
Yeah, don't you, don't you want to protect the environment? Don't you care about the environment?
It's because you're making twenty million dollars a year off this state contract as a private company.
We don't care about the environment. That's the state's job. That's the federal government's job.
And the worst part being that we're paying the additional rates because we're buying solar.
Right.
At a rate that's higher than what you actually are buying energy for.
That's the biggest.
So we're, we're all being forced to pay more for energy as well.
The rate is higher. Right, the rate is higher. So Middleboro and Lakeville has to subsidize this private-public cooperation partnership deal that's just making the guys that, the only bidder, one bidder, making them, what is it, twenty million dollars? Or forty million dollars or something over the.
Even larger, yeah.
Over the span of this contract.
Yeah.
It's not even being paid by the state. It's being paid by us. And that was the biggest concern, or one of the biggest concerns in that letter. We said, look, this is unfair on so many different levels, but it's fundamentally unfair that you're, you force us to pay money to the state to have the tea in our town. And now you're forcing us to pay higher electricity rates to subsidize this backroom deal that nobody had anything to do with. It's, it's horrible. So anyway, I think we've beaten this to death too. But we have, um, we do have a game plan and we'll have to try to, you know, make some phone calls independently to CAKO and Mike, all express our concern.
Right, we wanted a meeting.
Get stuff in writing to them, um, Karen Polito, just try to, try to shake the tree.
Let's go to the.
Letter to Karen Polito asking for a meeting with her.
Yep.
Same thing. We're offended to this. Get CAKO and Mike involved.
We feel like we're being less.
Right.
Heard.
All right. Uh, do we have new business?
No.
Um, just one quick thing.
No.
If I could pick this up there. Um, thinking I had to the annual town meeting. I didn't know if I could propose a date this far in advance. My daughter's coming home for a week in June.
No.
And town meeting picks up my life, um, near the end. And I'd just like to propose June fourth.
Okay, we could do it in May too, right?
That might be, yeah, we, I could, we did one year, uh, make it mid-May.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I don't think that that's unreasonable. I appreciate the.
The school is available. I haven't checked with anybody else, but if you didn't know, any of you would be away.
Go, get, get the night with the school. We can always change it, but lock up the school. That's the big deal.
Mr. Chair, the school is already reserved.
We're done.
I sent the form today.
No plays, no plays that night.
Update on town office building design for the assessors' move.
Okay, I know it's late. Um, I did type up an update of, I, Erin, I went over it today at the department head meeting. Just that, um, my move-in date, I'm hoping, I checked with John Oliveri today. It looks like it's going to be December eighteenth and nineteenth.
Where's the plan that.
You created it anyway.
Just got one back today. Nate got it from him today.
All right, we're not going to take up any time on this. Just leave it on the agenda and we'll talk about it on the sixth.
Okay.
But we've got to finalize this, and I want, as part of this, I want a budget for what this will cost.
Is, is that part of what he's going to do?
Who? No, you, him, I don't know. Figure it out. We need, we need this stuff. This has to get done. This is, it's, this is being, this is taking way too long. Um, update on community compact IT grant.
Okay, again, I, I know Missy wanted this on the agenda. So I just typed up a quick update, but I gave you an update on all of the, um,
Sorry.
Community Compact Grant, but on the, Sean Powell sent that notice to you, Missy. And I was just wondering, I'm not doing that on the HR grant, so that was a new form.
Yeah.
So I didn't know. I put together something. This is where we're at right now as far as we've met with the people G I F on the permitting software.
How come they haven't given us, they haven't given us a cost deck?
No, we met on October thirty-fourth, so I know.
Can you guys follow up with them?
Yep, yep.
Is that all that needs to be done?
But this, they're gonna, um, for the purchasing, which is a.
That's the system itself, right? Because then we also set aside, what, ten grand?
Ten grand, right.
So we have fifty for this. So is fifty going to be for the, well, we don't know how much this is costing, and then we have the training.
Right, and part of it too, we're looking at the permitting for, for other boards. And depending on how close we come up to fifty, we may have other, um, soft, other departments that would be included.
Okay.
Such as dog licenses for the town clerk.
Okay.
So I didn't know, are you okay with that update for him? I, I'm, I talk to Sean a lot on the other, um, community compact grants.
So their cost proposal is going to come with an implementation schedule?
Yes, and what the, what training is.
Cost, everything like that.
We did have one from them, um, two and a half years ago, and they're supposed to be updating it for us when we first looked at it.
Yeah, if we can just follow up with them. I'm surprised they haven't sent, you know, a month later that they haven't sent a.
Well, we're talking to a different Zany or Zeni. It was a different guy this time, yeah.
I mean, they're like a regular company, right?
Yeah.
Why don't they want like.
They're not state.
No, I'm like, why don't they want to stay out there? Because you know who sends to me. If I ask for a proposer, somebody ask for a proposer from me, I'd give it to him like tonight.
Okay. On the HR grant, uh, that started out moving pretty slowly too. They kept changing the people I was going to work with. But, uh, Laurie Flinder and I met with, uh, Libby Corbo and Mary from the Collins Center maybe a month ago. And then just on Friday, I received a fifteen-page questionnaire, so we're all working on, um, the HR grant. The third one, there's no money involved. It's, Mass IT is going to be working with us. That started a year, December of twenty sixteen. Um, they contacted me right away after I applied for the grant. Yeah, so, um, I sent them our IT strategic plan right away, talked to a couple of people. I've been through several, uh, of their employees and the last phone call I had, they put me on hold until after the first of the year because they were finishing up projects for other communities. So that one, like I said, it doesn't even have a deadline and there is no money involved.
Could we hire the IT director? What's up with that?
Well, that was going to be on the next.
Okay.
The deadline for another day.
Okay.
All right. Any other old business? Any other business that may properly come before the meeting? We do not have, we're not posted for executive session, thank God, but we'll put you on for the next one.
Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second up.
All those in favor?
All right.
You're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.